For your patience. We're going to resume with testimony from the public, and we have many people who want to speak who are online as well. But before we do so, I wanted to announce because this is going to be a very late meeting, we all expect we'll be here till midnight because we have several other items also to hear which are of significant controversy in the community. For that reason, I'm going to have to reduce the public comment to one minute with apologies. I know you've been very patient in waiting, but we have a lot of people who want to be heard, and we want to make sure we hear from everyone. So thank you for your patience. Tony, do you need to call roll before we start up again?
Yes.
President.
Morales.
Here.
Cohen. Carrasco. Davis. Esparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Licardo.
Present.
You have a form.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, let's resume with public testimony.
I'm going to call names that I called before the break. I did receive new cards as well. You guys will be called. So for everybody who was not here earlier, I'm going to call names. First person in the microphone, line up, say your name, and begin speaking for two minutes. Jason, one minute, sorry, one minute. Jason, Kunta Tsai, Amy Chow, Ellie, Jasmine, those were the names from before the break.
Good evening, Honorable Manager and City Members. Today tonight here, I encourage you guys vote for NO on Noble Side because it is, you can see, the side is really close to the school, and for the children's safety comes first, please vote for NO and do the right thing. And once again, election tells everything. You, you get to live in a nightmare for us, you will have a nightmare for next election. Believe me, people have the power. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So my name is Jason. So I come here just to want to speak out. So I think the city has a proposal for building the EIT and Cattle VTA Station. I think that's not the right place to build the EIH. So that area is very high density of the population and always a lot of traffic jam. So I think that's not good. And another thing is the largest for parking. So I took my kids to Children's Museum and High Tech Museum, always parked there and took the light rail. So if we build the EIH, so not enough parking, so not convenient. So please reconsider it.
Thank you.
The city had to be responsible.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, also come down, Tony, Tom Wilson, and Lori Catcher.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ellie. I want to say if you don't live around the Cattle Road area, you don't know the Cattle Road environment very well. Cattle Road VTA Parking Lot is next to the 85 Highway Enters. The entry is very busy and a lot of cars. It's not the right living place for human beings. It's very dangerous and noisy all the time. People living there, people living that tiny crowded parking lot can cause a lot of car accidents, and it's very, very dangerous for both drivers and homeless. It's also very noisy all the time. It makes people crazy and causes a lot of health and mental problems. If anyone agrees to build EIH there, then please try and live there one week to see how you feel. If you really care about homeless, you should find out.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Tony. I'm here to against building a tiny home at the mobile side. I'm just seeing is if I need to do something in my own house, I need a permit. But you cannot just build something in my backyard without our vote. So please consider for the safety and people lives at Noble Side. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. For over 45 years, Reach Two Park has been deliberately planned, improved, dedicated, and used as a park consisted with four planning documents, the city charter, and the city's 2040 general plan. The first one is the county's 1977 Penitentia Creek Chain Master Plan. The second is the 1981 tri-party agreement between the city, county, and Valley Water District. The third is the city's Penitentia Creek Master Plan for Reach Two. And the fourth is the Joint Trails Project Plan prepared and approved by the city and water district in June 2007 for Upper Penitentia Creek reaches one and two. So please vote in support of preserving Penitentia Creek Reach Two for now and forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Reese Enghart, Lori Stewart, and Chris Logan come down.
Hi, my name is Lori Catcher. I'm a 20-year resident and taxpayer of District Six. I am here with Surge of Sacred Heart in support of SOS and REX also committees at Sacred Heart. During the pandemic, I finally started paying attention to my unhoused neighbors, and I began volunteering in Columbus Park for the past year and a half on Saturday mornings and getting to know the people who live blocks away from my home. For those of us who have warm beds to live in at night and who have toilets and toilet paper to use during the day, we don't have to think about those things every single day of our lives. EIH housing gives people's beds to sleep in, bathrooms to use, and services that they gravely need. I'm in support of all EIH housing sites, more funding for our city workers to provide services there, and I also fully support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones. I'm opposed to any measures that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors who are human beings just like those of us who live in homes. Thank you.
Hi, I've only called three names. I have a lot more people who are standing. I have Reese, Chris, and Lori are the only three names that have been called so far. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Reese Enghart. I'm a member of Surge at Sacred Heart, speak in solidarity with REX and SOS at Sacred Heart. I spend a lot of time in downtown San Jose, and I've had many friendly interactions with the unhoused people living there. I wish them well. I don't want them to be called outside. Simple as that. When we talk about unhoused people, let's remember we're talking about actual human beings, about our neighbors. So I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services and outreach at all emergency interim housing sites, and more funding for our city workers to provide these services. I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones, and I'm opposed to any measures that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Chris Logan, and I am the organizing manager for Sacred Heart Housing Action Committee and Survivors of the Streets. I live right near Santa Teresa in Cattle Row, I believe it's in councilmember Foley's district. And I'm speaking in support of emergency interim housing and against the banning of encampment zones. I just want to say first of all that every time an unhoused person buys coffee at 7-Eleven, they pay taxes. And at Sacred Heart, we believe that everyone is worthy of dignity and respect, and so unhoused persons are indeed normal. I've had the privilege of working with a committee of people who are currently unhoused or have unhoused experience, and we recently were able to win prioritizing housing for people with behavioral health issues at the county level. I've seen, I've been astounded at the stories of these individuals. One of them has a PhD in engineering, another was a lawyer, another was a successful small business owner. And so I believe that all these people need a chance at living, and so I support the interim housing.
I'm going to call names that I called before the break. I did receive new cards as well. You guys will be called. So for everybody who was not here earlier, I'm going to call names. First person to the microphone, line up, say your name, and begin speaking for two minutes. Jason, one minute, sorry, one minute. Jason Kunta Tsai, Amy Chow, Ellie, Jasmine, those were the names from before the break.
Good evening, Honorable Manager and City members. Today tonight here, I encourage you guys vote for no on Noble Site because it is, you can see that the site is really close to the school, and for the children's safety comes first, please vote for no and do the right thing. And once again, election tells everything. You, you get to live in nightmare for us, you will have nightmare for next election. Believe me, people have the power. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So my name is Jason. So I come here just to want to speak out. So I think the city wants to propose for building the EIT and Cattle VTA Station. I think that's not the right place to build the EIH. So that area is very high density of the population and always a lot of traffic jam. So I think that's not good. And another thing is, is the largest for parking. So I use it to took my kids to Children's Museum and High Tech, High Tech Museum, Tech Museum, always parked there and took the lateral. So if we build the EIH, so not enough parking, so not convenient. So please reconsider it. So
Thank you.
The city had to be responsible.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, also come down, Tony, Tom Wilson, and Lori Catcher.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ellie. I want to say if you don't live around the Cattle Road area, you don't know the Cattle Road environment very well. Cattle Road VTA Parking Lot is next to the 85 Highway Entries. The entry is very busy and a lot of cars. It's not the right living place for human beings. It's very dangerous and noisy all the time. People living there, people living that tiny crowded parking lot can cause a lot of car accident, accidents, and it's very, very dangerous for both drivers and homeless. It's also very noisy all the time. It makes people crazy and cause a lot of health and mental problems. If anyone agree to build EIH there, then please try and live there one week to see how you feel. If you really care about homeless, you should find
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Tony. I'm here to against the building the tiny home at the Noble Site. I'm just seeing is if I need to something in my own house, I need a permit, but you cannot just build something in my backyard without our vote. So please consider for the safety and people lives at Noble Site. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. For over 45 years, Reach Two Park has been deliberately planned, improved, dedicated, and used as a park, consisted with four planning documents, the city charter, and the city's 2040 general plan. The first one is the county's 1977 Penitentia Creek Chain Master Plan. The second is the 1981 tri-party agreement between the city, county, and Valley Water District. The third is the city's Penitentia Creek Master Plan for Reach Two, and the fourth is the Joint Trails Project Plan prepared and approved by the City and Water District in June 2007 for Upper Penitentia Creek Reaches One and Two. So please vote in support of preserving Penitentia Creek Reach Two for now and forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Reese Enghart, Lori Stewart, and Chris Logan come down.
Hi, my name is Lori Catcher. I'm a 20-year resident and taxpayer of District Six. I am here with Surge of Sacred Heart in support of SOS and REX also committees at Sacred Heart. During the pandemic, I finally started paying attention to my unhoused neighbors, and I began volunteering in Columbus Park for the past year and a half on Saturday mornings and getting to know the people who live blocks away from my home. For those of us who have warm beds to live in at night and who have toilets and toilet paper to use during the day, we don't have to think about those things every single day of our lives. EIH housing gives people's beds to sleep in, bathrooms to use, and services that they gravely need. I'm in support of all EIH housing sites, more funding for our city workers to provide services there, and I also fully support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones. I'm opposed to any measures that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors who are human beings, just like those of us who live in homes. Thank you.
Hi, I've only called three names. I have a lot more people who are standing. I have Reese, Chris, and Lori are the only three names that have been called so far. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Reese Enghart. I'm a member of Surge at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity with REX and SOS at Sacred Heart. I spend a lot of time in downtown San Jose, and I've had many friendly interactions with the unhoused people living there. I wish them well. I don't want them to be cold outside, simple as that. When we talk about unhoused people, let's remember, we're talking about actual human beings, about our neighbors. So I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services and outreach at all emergency interim housing sites, and more funding for our city workers to provide these services. I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones, and I'm opposed to any measures that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Chris Logan, and I am the organizing manager for Sacred Heart Housing Action Committee and Survivors of the Streets. I live right near Santa Teresa and Cattle Row, I believe it's in Councilmember Foley's district, and I'm speaking in support of emergency interim housing and against the banning of encampment zones. I just want to say first of all that every time an unhoused person buys coffee at 7-Eleven, they pay taxes. And at Sacred Heart, we believe that everyone is worthy of dignity and respect, and so unhoused persons are indeed normal. I've had the privilege of working with a committee of people who are currently unhoused or have unhoused experience, and we recently were able to win prioritizing housing for people with behavioral health issues at the county level. I've seen, I've been astounded at the stories of these individuals. One of them has a PhD in engineering, another was a lawyer, another was a successful small business owner, and so I believe that all these people need a chance at living, and so I support the interim housing.
Thank you. Erica Mandretta, Nicole Bucalo, and David Sirlich, please come down. Go ahead.
I'm Lori Stewart.
Yeah, you are.
My name is Lori Stewart. I live downtown. I walked over tonight. It's cold outside. I saw Samuel eating his dinner on my way. He had his dinner resting on a garbage can. I was glad to see there was a flat top there. I know Samuel because along with Lori Catcher, I did not know her a year ago. I also started volunteering at Columbus Park, and he's there every week, along with 40 to 70 of his friends, to clean the park. He works hard. Patricia, who you met earlier, she's down there almost every Saturday as well. These people have changed me. I'm here today to support all new emergency interim housing. I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones, and I'm opposed to measures that would increase criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. And please start picking up the trash again at Columbus Park. It was really depressing the last two weeks to see these piles of trash. It's inhumane and unsafe, so please get it back there. It's amazing what happens when these people have a hand in cleaning up their own community. It's an awesome place to hang out. Come join us some Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Erica Mandretta. I'm a resident of Villas on the Park. It is important for someone to have shelter that provides dignity and opportunity to live a normal life, and it also allows a healthier lifestyle. I ask that you please approve the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, thank you. Hello, hello, everyone. Since US is a free speaking country, I express my opinion about construct a tiny house at VTA Cattle Parking Lot. I disagree this progress program because I have two important reasons. First, I remember Fifth Amendment says treat everyone is equal. Putting too much tiny house at San Teresa and Cattle Road area, this is not equal to residents living at this area. Second, I remember Fifteen Amendment said says should protect property of citizens. Too many tiny house located at Cattle Road and San Teresa area, it should make
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you. Your time is up. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nicole Bucalo, and I work for PATH in San Jose. Emergency interim housing is a life-saving intervention and is critical, is a critical step in individuals' and families' paths out of homelessness. These types of sites provide people with dignity by providing much more privacy and control over one's environment than larger congregate shelters. At Evans Lane, we have been able to move people into permanent housing and other supportive environments at really high rates due to our strong team and emphasis on supportive services. We know that housing with supportive services ends homelessness. Permanent housing is still the long-term goal and the solution to homelessness, but our neighbors living unsheltered need help right now. This motion will be an important first step for so many San Jose residents. We sincerely ask for the council's approval today, and we affirm the recommendation for a service-centric model. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also come down Anthony Fan, Deborah St. Julian, and Michelle Lau.
Hi, my name is Davis Sirlich from District Three, and I'm a member of SOS at Sacred Heart. I have a PhD from Stanford University, and I suffered from mental illness and became unhoused. I'm an example of the type of person that can be helped by more support for the unhoused community. I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more service and outreach for all emergency interim housing sites, and more funding for our city workers to provide those services. I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones and opposed to any measure that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Anthony Fan. I live in District Seven. I'm a member of the Housing Action Committee at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity at SOS at Sacred Heart. I live in a neighborhood with a substantial unhoused population. I've had the opportunity to speak to many of these residents who could still not find stable housing. These people are hardworking, they are passionate, and they are resilient. But we cannot ignore the scenario that is stacked up against them. Many people have found their footing, but they still cannot climb the mountain. That is our housing inequality and lack of community assistance. I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services and outreach at all community, emergency interim housing sites, and more funding for our city workers to provide these services. I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones, and I am opposed to any measures that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Lily Jen Meyer and Catherine Hedges.
I'm Deborah St. Julian, and I'm in Showing Up for Racial Justice, and I belong to Urban Sanctuary right over here, your neighbor, and I was a nurse practitioner at Kaiser for 14 and a half years. Next to Cottle. Okay, so, and I want to say just yes to everything he just said. I support your hardworking staff recommendations across the board, and I want to say as a person of faith that I am compelled to see every person on the street as actually my brother or sister or my child or my partner. And I can't just walk by him anymore and think, oh, oh, well, that's somebody else's problem. I want to, I heard three things. First, parking. I worked at Kaiser. Half of that thing was filled up with Kaiser people who parked there, didn't take transportation and walked over. I'm sure your people know this, your staff. That place is not full. I hear fear, and I hear your staff say, you, it's, it's going to be less scary if you have interim housing. So yay, your staff is right. It's not going to be scary. You know, it's glitchy sometimes.
Thank you.
Ah, yay.
Next speaker.
My name is Jen Meyer. I'm a voter, taxpayer, SEIU worker, a member of Surge and solidarity with REX and SOS. I actually live in D3. I am walking distance from EIH, and I would like to say that these types of housing make my neighborhood better rather than worse, safer rather than more dangerous. And I find the hand wringing expressed tonight by folks in D10 and D4, two of the districts with the lowest amount of EIH, to be quite distanced from the reality of living in the district with the most EIH beds. And it's fear mongering to stereotype unhoused folks as dangerous when in fact most are simply people living with disability or chronic illness. Emergency housing and supportive services is good for all of us because it prevents crime and the kinds of disturbances that folks in D4 and D10 are worried about. It also is a moral imperative. We are taught to love our neighbors. Emergency homes and increased services are how we do this. I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services and outreach at all EIH sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Robert Mikkinen and Sandra Harrison, come on down.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lily. I moved to this area, Highway 85, for about one year. During this one year, I only walked outside about less than 20 times. The reason is that my house is under the airway. I can hear the noises of the cars, I mean, the police cars sometimes. And we often read news about there's some safe or some bad guy running around the neighborhood, which frightened me a lot. Today, I only want to express my frightening being a citizen of San Jose at that area. I think when I, when I want to tell my friend or my neighbors that I'm a citizen of San Jose, I want to tell them proudly, but I just cannot. I think it's a very good action that government should help everyone, including residents and unhoused people. We want to, we want to be nice, but I think there must be other good ways or better ways to do that, to protect both us and them.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I repeat, the stealth bomb of a vote you dropped on our community in June has robbed us of our summer and our fall. What makes this extra upsetting is that Noble Ave should have never been put on the table for consideration in the first place. This was preventable. The very least you could do to make some kind of amends, don't add even more unnecessary and preventable stress by making our Berryessa community wait for another four or five months before you provide Penitentia Creek Reach Two the protected open space park status it in fact already has. I want to add that you're never going to solve this crisis unless you stop using vague and umbrella terms like homeless or unhoused. You need to say people with drug addictions, people with mental illness, people prematurely released from prison, people experiencing financial hardship. This is not one demographic.
Thank you. Next speaker. Elva Wilson, Tiffany Lee, and Donna Wallach come on down.
City Council, today is your big day. Today is your opportunity to take a big step forward in restoring the trust in your local government. I'm encouraged, knowing that you have been given all the facts about the Noble Site officially named Penitentia Creek Reach Two Park. Now that it's very clear to all of you that the Noble Site is 100% a park and should be protected from having tiny homes built on it, I'm asking you to restore the community's trust. The community's trust we need. Vote to remove the Noble Site from the EIH list permanently, now and forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Elva Wilson. While I appreciate all the agencies here in support of EIH housing, I could guarantee many of you that those agencies have a lot to gain from providing these services, likely receiving no bid or informal bid contracts. Same difference, I was a professional in contracting. Most people here opposing Noble and Cottle are here because it is an inappropriate site. Because it's an inappropriate site, not because they're against housing homeless. It's an inappropriate site, and pleading with you to have some sensitivity to the vulnerability of women in proximity to homeless. I was personally accosted twice, two times alone by homeless persons, one time exposing self
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. As an alumni of Toyon Elementary School, Piedmont Middle, and Piedmont Hills High School, I have fond memories of running across the street to the 7-Eleven right as the school bell rang to grab a Slurpee before walking over to Noble Library, where I spent countless hours studying with my friends until my father, who worked multiple jobs at the time, could pick me up. With the proposal of these EIH homes, it is disappointing to think that my future children may never experience the same sense of safety and freedom that I felt. After college, I was fortunate enough to be able to purchase my own home in the Berryessa neighborhood, where I could also be near my aging parents. During the midst of the pandemic, the need to maintain a mentally and physically healthy lifestyle really showed, and at a time when people were so fearful to even leave the house, our nearby parks served as a place of solace and refuge. The safety of our children, seniors, and wildlife should always be a priority. Vote no on the Noble Site. Thank you.
Thank you. Kanson Chu. Also, I have Catherine Hedges, who I called but didn't come down in case you didn't hear your name. So Kanson Chu and Catherine Hedges.
Honorable Mayors and Council, my name is Kanson Chu. I spoke in front of you earlier regarding to the Noble Site on behalf of the Berryessa Union School District to ask you to not consider building the tiny homes so close to the, to the school. And I'm here tonight to respectfully request you to permanently move, remove the Noble Site and also, I believe, the Commodore Park Site, as well as the Berryessa School District Office Site, all of the list, so we don't have to come back again to, to avoid our concerns regarding to, to the, the close proximity to our residents and to school. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. My name is Catherine Hedges, and I'm a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice. And I'd like to remind the audience and Council, I'm sure all you know this, according to the city staff and the report, I'm sorry, I lost my place. There are approximately 5,400 unsheltered individuals in the community housing queue. The city and county of San Clary is coordinated entry for housing, and the most vulnerable individuals are prioritized. Some data on those individuals in the housing queue. 72% have a disabling condition, 50% are age 45 and older, 36 have chronic health issues, 7% are families with children, 5% are transitional age youth, and 3% are veterans. Data from YWCA confirms a significant need for shelter and interim housing for survivors of gender-based violence. These are vulnerable people who will be getting the interim housing. The people in housing are overlooking the needs of their unhoused neighbors. Thank you very, you, the council need to protect the unhoused people and approve the EIH. Thank you.
Thank you. I have called all of the speaker cards. For the people in the council chambers, I'm going to move on to Zoom. If you did not hear your name earlier, just resubmit a card. So moving on to Zoom, I have Jackie Hefner.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am a 30-year resident of, of District 10. It used to be District Two, and I'm speaking to you today in support of the Cottle VTA. I hope that you do approve what the Housing Department is suggesting. It is a wonderful location. There is no on-street parking around there, which makes it easier for you to go around and to see that nothing else is going on. It is located next to shopping, obviously transportation, a hospital. And the goal, if I understand correctly, is to get these done quickly. If you do not approve this site, we aren't going to see an EIH, and we're going to see people suffering. I might remind you that Thursday, we're experiencing a big rainstorm and lots of cold weather. Our unsheltered people are going to be suffering during that time, and we cannot not do something. We must step up and do something. Thank you.
Michael?
Hi, thank you. We're not here to talk about EIHs or aesthetics or their social necessity. What we are here to talk about, however, is the suitability of the Cottle VTA EIH. As a District Two slash 10 resident, I'm speaking here today on behalf of my family, as well as my late uncle, who in 2021 was recovering at Kaiser before contracting COVID, in hospital, and passing away shortly thereafter, despite all of the safety and health precautions at that time. Even if you feign ignorance regarding the negative impacts to our schools, parks, public transportation, and community congestion, if I had only one main point to make, it would be this. Using the rationale of COVID to place a large EIH facility directly in a heavily congested junction, having constant ambulance vehicles, and next to a multifaceted hospital is completely wrong, borderline reckless, and contradicts the original
Nehar?
Hi, my name is Nehar Agarwal, and I'm a member of Race Equity and Community Safety at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity with SOS at Sacred Heart. I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services, outreach at all emergency interim housing sites, and more funding for our city workers to provide those services. Criminalizing homelessness has been shown to be the least effective and most expensive way of managing homelessness, which echoes what those with lived experience and Alice have been saying for years in San Jose. This isn't an unsolved problem. We know what works here. People with lived experience have presented real and lasting solutions to the underlying causes of homelessness that are validated by data. EIH is help, and we know that housing is a benefit to our entire communities. Lives hang in the balance here, particularly the lives of our most vulnerable communities.
Sophia?
My name is Sophia. I was born and raised in District Three, and I'm also a member of REX at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity with SOS. I grew up very low income. We are fortunate to have relatives in the city, but without their support, we undoubtedly would have been unhoused many times over. Not everyone was as lucky as us. I think about my friends in school who live with their families in their cars, and I think about how EIH sites could have provided them with more stability. And when I think about folks living on the streets today, I think about how terrible it is that people refuse to recognize you as a person with dignity, to endure continual police harassment and destruction of your belongings, and to lose and to lose trust in a city that promises that it cares but has failed to deliver dignified housing. I am very happy to see sites developed in my district and ask the council to approve the EIH sites presented today and the staff recommendation for more funding, services, and outreach at all sites. However, I am firmly against creating no encampment zones in our community. The implementation of no encampment zones necessitates the violence of so-called abatement. If our city is failing to fully meet the need of housing, we have no right to criminalize how people navigate homelessness. Thank you for your time.
Cassette?
Hello, my name is Cassette Fitzgerald. I'm from District 4 and I'm a member of SURGE at Sacred Heart. I support emergency interim housing for the city. This matters to me personally, as I've had a couple of young, disabled, queer, and trans unhoused friends who have struggled to stay safe, especially during the pandemic. Unhoused people are normal people, and they are not inherent threats to public safety. Emergency interim housing helps our most vulnerable neighbors with the multiple forms of support they need. And we need to stop criminalizing mental illness and acts of survival. I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing, more services and outreach at all EIH sites, and more funding for city workers and case managers to provide those services. I do not support implementation of no encampment zones, and I do not support any measures that would criminalize unhoused neighbors like my friends. Thank you for your time.
Emma?
Hi, my name is Emma Hartung. I'm in City Council District 3. I'm a member of SURGE at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity with REX and SOS at Sacred Heart. I just want to echo what so many people have said, that we know housing costs are sky-high here in San Jose, and how impossible it is to find affordable housing. Last year, between 2020 and end of 2021, about 250 people that we know of died, living homeless in our county. This is something, and that is a problem, that you can only address with housing. I'm asking the council to approve new EIHs and to approve all staff recommendations for more services and outreach at all EIH sites, including more funding for non-sworn, non-police city workers to provide those services. And I strongly support the recommendation for no, no encampment zones, and I'm opposed to measures that would increase criminalization as well. So no abatement, no more policing. Please just let people live safely in our communities, and that means more housing and less criminalization. Thank you.
Issa? Issa? Okay, moving on to Blair.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Things to consider with this item. We have now good state funding available into the future. I hope we really want to organize ourselves in how to address decades-old housing problems, like how San Jose housing staff can follow from beginning to end the journey of the unhoused persons they work with. Interestingly, to try to shift the focus and instead consider the concepts of SJ government NGO-sponsored encampments and in local hotspots, it may actually add an important degree of safety and organization to the future of local San Jose neighborhoods. When considering the future of Vision Zero and city-sponsored encampments, safe parking, and housing planning, I hope all sites to be considered can be where the land is not considered as toxic, harmful, questionable, or unlivable. To conclude, the many different housing ideas on this agenda item may also be offering a certain lack of human care that may be needed for the genuine unhoused concerns of this agenda item, and that I hope we are all learning how we can all work together to better understand and connect the unhoused issues and needs within each local neighborhood of San Jose. Thanks a lot.
Andrew?
Hi, my name is Andrew Siegler, a taxpayer from D3 in San Jose. I'm a member of SURGE at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity with REX and SOS at Sacred Heart. I'm a San Jose native. I went to school here, and I worked in tech. However, due in part to a mental health disability and some bad luck, I ended up homeless for five years. It's demoralizing to hear the unhoused referred to as "those homeless", while the housed are referred to as "the normal people", as I've heard in previous comments. We need to take care of our most vulnerable. We need to stop fear-mongering and get people in safe locations. I ask the council to approve the new EIH and the staff recommendation for more services and outreach to all EIH sites, and more funding to our city workers and especially non-sworn staff to provide those services. I do not support no encampment zones, and I'm opposed to any measures that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. Thank you. I yield my time.
Rachel?
Hi, my name is Rachel Krantz. I'm a member of SURGE at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity with REX and SOS at Sacred Heart. I'm a therapist, and I hear stories from my clients who are unhoused. I see the devastating impact of not having a safe, warm place to stay. I want to say unhoused people are normal, are working people, and are taxpayers. This is why we urgently need more emergency interim housing sites in our community. Staff analysis shows that emergency interim housing is more effective than congregate shelters in connecting residents to long-term housing. Residents feel safe at the sites because they have a private unit with a lockable door. I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing, more services at all EIH sites, and more funding for our city workers to provide those services. I am against creating no encampment zones, and I am opposed to any measures that would criminalize our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
Julia?
Hello, my name is Julia Manjoni, and I'm a member of SURGE, Showing Up for Racial Justice at Sacred Heart. It is disheartening and disturbing to hear our San Jose neighbors this evening using harmful language and fear-mongering tactics. We can always find a reason that a site isn't the right one. Meanwhile, our unhoused neighbors are suffering. I want to uplift the point of view that our unhoused neighbors live without safety every day. If we value safety, including for our disabled neighbors, our elders, our families with children, our neighbors with chronic health conditions like mine, then we will support all new EIH sites proposed by staff. Our unhoused neighbors, like all of us, deserve safe and stable housing now. For all those reasons, and the many, many other reasons people have shared tonight, I'm here speaking against no encampment zones and in support of the swift approval of all emergency interim housing sites and of more funding for service providers to deliver these vital life-saving services that increase safety and well-being for all of us.
Kim?
I am a member of Sacred Heart. I live in District 10. And I'm speaking in solidarity with REX and SOS at Sacred Heart.
Kim, we can barely hear you.
Pardon me?
We can barely hear you.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. This is a racial justice issue. As a homeowner, I recognize that the reason why my husband and I can own a home is essentially because we're white. Our generational wealth, which people of color in this country have been purposed to be, is systematically set out as poverty, not hard work, and sin, and stuff higher. It's also humanitarianism. Unhoused people are human. They endure. I'm committing a crime by being poor. I ask the council to approve the measures presented by the people who know the path, or stop. Finally, came on you, Sam Licardo, for making no difference in housing numbers. I just checked the one you took off since 2015, there were 4,000 people in San Jose. That number is now just 17,000. But to get this, 66% increase, quite all the money thrown in there. Really need to stand this one. It was acting perfectly right.
Nita and Katan? Nita?
This is Katan Munee. We live in Palmyra. And the-
Nita, we can't hear you.
Are you on me?
Yeah, that's better.
Down in Europe? Hello?
Hello, you're very faint. If you can just talk louder.
Okay. This is Katan Munee, and we live in Palmyra for the last 20 years. We had an opportunity to listen to the staff from last week as to why they chose Cottle Site. And it was very interesting to hear the two things that are really flawed. One is, it stated that the VTA site is underutilized, and that's why it's a good site for housing, emergency housing. And then the second reason was because the Safeway is next to it. So those two reasons do not give any reasons for a site that really, there is a lot of opposition because of safety and not doing a proper thorough work. There are other sites that are-
Caller 3781?
Hello, I'm John Burke, and it's a long meeting, so I just came back from getting my car. And I, so I'm a little bit flummoxed, but as a person of faith, I stand in solidarity with SOS, REX. And I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services, or for more services and outreach at all emergency interim housing sites, and more funding for our city workers to provide those services. I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones, and I'm opposed to any measures that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. And I too am upset that people would talk about-
Linda?
Hi, this is- can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Linda. The city, I'm a resident near the Cottle Road area. The city should protect hard-working, law-abiding citizens who may be housed or unhoused. This is where the city's budget should be directed to. Without abatement matters, encampment bans, and more stringent entrance requirements, EIH program inevitably attracts individuals who pose public safety and health concerns, and those who do not want to follow the rules. The Cottle Road site is particularly bad because it's close to residential areas and is within walking distance to schools and elder care. We, as a society, have an obligation to protect those vulnerable groups from individuals, such as, sorry, those vulnerable groups, such as women, child, from individuals who pose public safety and health concerns attracted by EIH. For those reasons, I oppose building EIH at the Cottle Road site, and oppose the city's recommendation of no abatement zone and no encampment bans.
Caller 0467?
Hello, my name is Raquel Welch. I'm asking you to support the housing for all the homeless. We must protect all these folks that are so vulnerable, in particular with this bad weather that we're going to be having soon. I do support all housing for homeless. Thank you.
Jonathan?
My name is Jonathan Fleming, and I am a resident of South San Jose. The residents of South San Jose want a plan that makes sense and do not believe that any project should be approved, which proposes to improve one community by harming another. Cottle VTA is vital to our working middle class, and placing EIH housing on a transportation site will place barriers to the use of ETA for ridership. Most importantly, my neighbors do not agree with this proposal and do not want it. Thank you, Mayor Licardo, for the recommendation of no encampment zones. Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, for recommending the removal of EIH at the Cottle VTA site. The current plan for homelessness is not working. Housing first does not work. Homelessness is getting worse, and people are dying because our government is focused on failed methodology and refuses to look at other solutions, like those which house our military service members overseas. Please do not support EIH at the Cottle San Jose VTA station and reevaluate the overall methodology we collectively employ to assist our homeless community. Thank you.
Vicki? Vicki, hold on before you speak. People in the audience, they can't hear you applaud, so you will be cutting their speaking off if you're applauding while they're trying to talk. Go ahead, Vicki.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, City Council. Unfortunately, that was disrespectful for leaving and not listening to us. Your voters, when informing you why we should not, we should vote no for EIA, EIH at Cottle VTA. Let us focus on fair distribution. Most of EIA, EIH are concentrated in 1.5-mile radius. Approximately 65% of these programs are located in 1.5 radius. We want fair distribution. We are not saying nothing negative about homeless. We are saying to remove Cottle off the list. Kaiser employees and patients use it. The Cottle VTA is highly on a dense slope. No V EIA on, for Cottle.
Sandy?
Yeah, my name is Sandy Perry. I'm with the Affordable Housing Network, and we support the temporary quick build housing as long as we recommend, as long as we recognize its limitations, that the real solution is permanent housing. However, we do need these sites. We support the recommendation for Saroni and Cottle Road. We especially support the staff recommendations to not establish no encampment zones. And I've heard a lot of people complain about unhoused people, but what they're saying does not make, to use a word, it's not common sense. That's a word we're using lately. The, with the EIHs, people will not be unhoused anymore. And especially, I heard a comment from a Kaiser worker complaining about fecal matter being smeared around at Kaiser. Well, we're talking about building bathrooms for people. This is going to solve a problem, not create a problem. Thank you.
Karen?
Hi, my name is Karen. I'm speaking in support of the Cottle Site. I live less than two miles from Cottle and less than a mile from the two existing EIHs. I'm on the advisory group for the two existing EIHs, which provides our community the opportunity to work with the provider to have issues that they are responsible for addressed very quickly. I do think the communities will benefit from enhanced services in the area surrounding the EIHs. Often, it's the issues nearby that impact the reputation of the EIH, and people tend to blame the EIH for problems nearby that often existed before the EIHs went in. So I am supporting both the Cottle and enhanced services. Thank you very much.
Gabby Mendoza?
Yes. SOS, to see, you know, and hear these comments. I'm a community navigator, and I work with the community. And I'm off the clock, so I just want to say that for the record. And at our office with Amigos de Guadalupe, we see families come in every single day looking for interim housing. These people will not go steal your stuff, do anything. They're so busy trying to get their life together. People, these people are community members. They're part of society. They're just like you and me and everybody else that has a home. They're lucky enough to have a home. Okay? Understand that. They're not the problem. They, we need, they have a problem, but we need to help them. And you guys are not making it easy for the city to find these places, because every time you guys come and say, "No, no, no, not in my backyard", that mentality needs to get out of San Jose. We all want.
David?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm David Noel, a neighborhood leader in District 9. I'm speaking in strong support of Mayor Licardo and Mayor-elect Mayhans' memos. I'm optimistic that we are beginning to turn the corner on the homeless situation in San Jose. While most of the public comment tonight has been focused on a few specific EIH and safe parking sites, tonight's decision also sets citywide policy. In order to soften neighborhood opposition for future EIH and safe parking sites, we need all the sites to improve the neighborhoods they are in. And that includes site-appropriate buffer zones. Areas near EIH and safe parking sites need to look better and feel safer than they did without the housing facility. We need more success stories, like the one we saw in the inspiring video this afternoon. We also need to leverage the human potential of the EIH and safe parking residents in ways that build community connections and resident resumes, and ultimately self-sufficiency. Regarding the Cottle EIH site, please ensure there is sufficient transit parking. Thank you.
Willie?
Okay. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me this chance. I am here. I am a resident of Berriessa, and my house is nearby the Noble Park. And I'm here to tell David Cohen our- and my house is nearby the Noble Park and I'm here to tell David Cohen, our representative, to permanently remove Noble from the list of the EIH. I think the reason is written forward. This is not an issue that the lucky ones versus the unlucky ones. This is an issue that the people versus the environment. We need to take care of our environment and we need to take care of our parks to save it for the future generations. So I encourage David Cohen to listen to the voice of the people in your district and make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Zeke Sandoval, also Carly, come on down, and Yi Liao, come on down. Go ahead, Zeke.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Zeke Sandoval, Public Policy Manager with PATH, People Assisting the Homeless. PATH is one of the largest nonprofit homeless service providers in California, and as you know, we're the proud operators of the Evans Lane Emergency Interim Housing Site. We were so happy to welcome Mayor Licardo and Mayor-elect Mayhans to the site last week and grateful for their support, as well as the consistent partnership of our Councilmember Dev Davis. Let's be clear, housing ends homelessness. San Jose unquestionably needs more permanent homes, but emergency interim housing has proven to be a lifesaving intervention while more housing is built. Like the emergency interim housing in operation now and considered today, Evans Lane is staffed by our dedicated team of support staff to help our residents exit homelessness for good. That's why we've been able to move about half of our residents into permanent housing already and even more into other housing situations with more intensive support. We happily support this motion and all staff recommendations that center services. Thank you.
Okay, we still have hands up on Zoom, but I'm going to go to the in-person speakers and then we'll go back to Zoom speakers. So again, I've got Carly, Yi Liao, whoever's first to the microphone, come down, and then Jesse Noble.
Good, all right. Hi, I'm Carly Peach and I'm here with Showing Up for Racial Justice. And I am here in, I didn't really prepare my comments, so I'm here in support of interim housing. And when I think about implementing these like no encampment zones, I bike through San Jose every day to get to San Jose State from Deirdre Don and it really is so frustrating to see people being cleared out and know that they have nowhere else to go. And so, just like, it's just really devastating and I feel really hopeless for them. And so, yeah, please don't, please don't criminalize our unhoused neighbors and please do build emergency interim housing for them. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hey, Councilman and Mayor. What is the city with EIH or tiny home or other projects were failed? Build more tiny home, you'll get more homeless. Please check the data. You can see that. Secondly, Sam, you call other people not in my backyard. Please build one tiny home in your backyard to see, to show your helpful. This is the second one. Third one, education is the key for reduce homelessness. So put more fun in education, not in the air. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Jesse Noble. I don't have anything to do with the site. That's just a coincidence. Otherwise, I'd just say, go for it. It's on my street. Let's do it. But no, I just kind of feel like I have a duty to give some perspective here because I worked, volunteered at Habitat for Humanity alongside Mayor Licardo twice, actually, at the Mayberry site last year, like in 2019, I think, out in the rain. And so, one thing that I hear people complain about a lot is like these big tech companies that are not doing their share and they're not pitching in. But I've worked right there side by side with a different crew every day from like Google and Amazon and, you know, and Facebook and Super Micro and all these companies that send their employees to Habitat for Humanity. And we're building those little tiny houses, so it's really just like good all around.
Thank you.
It's, oh, there's way more to it, but.
Caller 3143.
That request to reject the alternative recommendation to develop private recreation, open space land.
I think you're speaking on a different item, sir. That item will be coming up subsequent to this one.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Laura?
Yes, hello, thank you. My name is Laura Sandoval. I work for PATH, a nonprofit committed to ending homelessness. As the Regional Director, I oversee all regional programs, including street outreach and also services at Evans Lane and interim housing community. Every day, our outreach teams see and hear the growing need for immediate housing solutions throughout the city. Expanding interim housing interventions will save lives, providing not only a safe place to stay, but also wraparound supportive services for people on their journey out of homelessness. We have seen that housing plus support ends homelessness and improves quality of life. Permanent housing is still the long-term solution to end homelessness, but our unsheltered neighbors cannot wait. They need safe and dignified options right now. This motion addresses a critical need for San Jose residents and we ask for the council's approval for these recommendations today. Thank you.
Shivani?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We are not against homeless. I want to be very clear. We are against the EIH site at Cottle VTA. It is very unsafe even for the homeless people. There is a big offer, the lot is on a big slope on and off the ramp of 85, so construction for homeless tiny homes will be very difficult. Also, there is only one walkway for the ramp on the riders, VTA riders and Kaiser patients. It is highly congested by six major intersections. So we are not against homeless people. We are against the EIH site for the parking lot at the Cottle VTA. Also, the site would be too close to the hospitals and daycare, so please reconsider. The site is not safe for the homeless people. Secondly, Omar, in his presentation, said that the neighborhood was informed with three languages about this site. We were not at all informed. We were only informed.
Ally?
Hi, my name is Ally Saferman and I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. And as a San Jose resident, I've had a long history of housing and food insecurity, largely due to domestic violence. And I don't happen to be a dangerous neighbor, as some folks have said tonight. I'm calling in strong support of the staff recommendations after hearing some of the vile things that have been said tonight. I wasn't planning on speaking because simply this is a no-brainer. But after hearing clapping and about fear mongering of the unhoused community, I felt the need to speak up. Just want to thank the council for your leadership. Unfortunately, a lot of the people here who are directly, who directly benefit from this program aren't here to speak. But according to recent census data, San Jose reports nearly 7,000 unhoused individuals. So it's really important we begin to house all of our community. It affects all of us. Thank you.
Friendly Jessica and Yang Zhi. First one to the microphone. And please say your name so we know which card.
Hello, I'm a resident in Noble area, so I'm here to against the Noble site. First, I want to be very clear that we are supporting the homeless people, but Noble site is definitely not a good idea because first, it's very close to school. We do, we need to think about the safety of our children. The most important thing is the mobile site is a park, a park. I think that's very, very clear that it is a park. So if we consider all of the park can be a like EIH house or homeless shelter, I recommend the mayor's to change all of the park to in San Jose to be for homeless. But I just want to emphasize that it's a really bad idea to build a EIH house in Noble. It is a park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time. Thank you for all the support for these homeless people. I really think that building a Noble site, thank you for the effort by pointing in our next generation by building a lot of homeless site, right next course to like a school, the libraries. I think those people is definitely going to give a perfect example to our next generation. Hey, if you don't work hard, you don't, if you don't study, don't worry about it because your government is going to taking care of you. Is, you're going to have a place to live. You don't have to work and study. You don't have to do anything. It's going to taking care of you. But my question is, is this going to solve all the problem that you guys have? And when are you guys? Money is not coming from nowhere. It's because people using highs and jobs, they created their money and it's our tax money, right? If nobody's working, they just live there in their house for free. How are you guys getting money from? And sooner or later, the government is going to losing all the funds. I know US right now, they have 30 trillions of debts, right?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dear councilmembers, I appreciate your kindness and efforts trying to help those people in need. While this doesn't justify the rash decision to actually build a homeless shelter just near a school. Yeah, so firstly, that is established park and the city and San Clara Water District, they have kind of like spent many years and resources on that. And also, this site is not convenient for homeless as well. So this decision is going to be a waste of public resources. I would urge you to reconsider the site selection. Thanks.
Donna?
My name is Donna Wallach. I'm from District 2. I am speaking in solidarity with everyone who is here for new emergency interim housing and for more services and outreach of all emergency interim housing sites and for more funding and for our city workers to provide those services, also against any, no encampment and also against any criminalization of the houseless. I am a caregiver. Before the pandemic, one of my clients became houseless. It took her almost a year to find an affordable room to rent in a house that was accessible to her. During her houseless time, she stayed in Airbnbs. This was disastrous for her health and severely impacted her condition. She was constantly having to move and could usually only stay in the same place for a week at the most. Every time she had to move, she had to wake up early. We would pack up her car and then wait for hours until she could move into the next place.
Chester?
Hello, yeah, my name is Chester and I just want to mention a few points here regarding the EIH house and in the Cottle VTA parking. Yeah, and first of all, we are residential there and we pay the tax and we pay a lot of money and build up the VTA. And now you want to set up another point. Yeah, this is the first one. The second one, like other people mentioned, there is no direction, the walking way from outside go to that parking. So the intersection, there's a lot of the traffic. So if those people who live there got injured, who will pay for them? Right? We also need a paper that is unfair for the residents, for the people who live there, right? And I think the San Jose area is so huge, it's a number tens of the large city in the United States. I believe in the mayor and the city council member, you could find another, another place.
Thank you. Derek Morris? I think we lost Derek. Moving on to Michelle.
My name is Michelle Coleman. I'm a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice at Sacred Heart. I'm speaking in solidarity with survivors of the street at Sacred Heart. I pay taxes. I pay taxes, own a home and vote in District 6. While those facts make me fortunate and privileged, they do not make me more deserving of health and safety or a warm and dry place to sleep or privacy or being treated with dignity as a human being. This project will serve the most vulnerable members of our community. These are our neighbors with disabling conditions, with chronic health issues, including many older people as well as families with children. These people in crisis are members of our community. They deserve compassion. They deserve to be treated with dignity and they deserve to survive. I ask the council to approve the.
Hafie?
Yeah, hi, this is Gov Gotham, speaking. There was a story about Chris, which was really heartwarming. Let me tell you a story offset. So there's a young adult with high functioning autism. He gets up at 5:15 every day, takes a VTA 24 miles to go to work and then comes back taking two VTAs. He was doing this all the time until the time once when he was attacked by a unhoused individual in the city metro station. He, since then, he has refused to use VTA. The reason why I'm saying this is that, and of course, he also pays his taxes. He pays very little of his taxes because of what he earns is not that much. The reason I'm saying is that for every story, there's another story for us to tell. And so, this is not a cause that only stake in the hot seat or go off. This is a cause for all of us. We're only looking, asking you to look at the data and don't gaslight the individuals that are opposing the Cottle site, somebody against homeless. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nora and I'm in District 3. I'm a member of Serge at Sacred Heart, speaking in solidarity with Rex and SOS at Sacred Heart. I live near 13th Street and it's heartbreaking to see the number of unhoused neighbors in the area. My young daughter asks me about the people she sees and the tents they live in, and I have to tell her the community has not yet stepped up to take care of each other. As the presenter stated, emergency interim housing is good for all of us. Emergency interim housing helps us care for our most vulnerable neighbors and it's a win-win. Many speakers have discussed concerns about safety, but the data showed that in the majority of neighborhoods where emergency interim housing sites were open, neighborhood conditions stayed the same or improved. It's traumatic to create no encampment zones. It doesn't help solve homelessness. We need to work as a community to repair systemic wrongs that have led to this current crisis and we can't turn to criminalizing homelessness.
Oscar?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let's see. As you know, this site is important to the Noble community. We appreciate this unique park due to its natural characteristics for the community to enjoy. I appreciate Councilmember Cohen speaking up that this is a park and I appreciate the other leaders also from Buriassa Yugin, speaking out the concerns for the school district. And I just want to speak out against putting these sites near schools and replacing parks with them. I'm interested in hearing what the other agencies have said about these proposed changes.
Nicole?
Hi, hello. My name is Nicole and I live in District 3 and I'm a member of Serge at Sacred Heart. And I'm speaking tonight in solidarity with Rex and SOS at Sacred Heart. So I'm fortunate enough to have a safe and stable place to live and I've never been unhoused. This is not because I'm particularly hardworking or deserving. It's because I benefit from white privileged generational wealth and pure luck. Before today, in fact, I didn't even know that I live in the district with the most emergency interim housing. Living near EIH has not made me less safe. It's had no negative impact on my life. But as you've heard from other speakers tonight, EIH is life-changing for our unhoused neighbors. Everyone across all of San Jose deserves a safe place to live. So I ask the city council to approve new EIH
So I ask the city council to approve new EIH and more funding for our city workers to provide those services. And I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones and I oppose criminalizing our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
Jeffy? Jeffy Colsa? Okay, moving on to caller one, three, two, four.
Yeah, this is Paul Suffer from a Horseshoe. I think we need a historical perspective in order to really understand what we're looking at. Now, in the nineteen forties, we had camps. We had people living in tents in South Secuades. Eighty years later, we still have people living in camps. This is a moral and ethical issue and the character of San Jose is at stake right now. So the I hope the council fills the heat because the moral and ethical character of this city is at stake. Racist and classist policies have continued to perpetually, generationally kept people in tents. This is a moral issue and if District Board plans on being reelected, I already know he's going, how he's gonna vote. He's gonna make sure that Noble is canceled, but for the.
Vicky?
Okay, hi, my name is Vicky. I'm living in the neighborhood near to the Cottle VTA station. I support to help the homeless people with sheltered places to live, but I'm against and say no, the tiny houses at Cottle VTA station particularly. The station is near to the community facilities like school and the sanitarium library. I always walked to sanitarium library with my kids, one is two years old and the other is five years old. I cannot afford any safety risk in this area as a mother for my kids. Considering the increased safety risk, I dare not to take my kids to the library. It's not fair for me, for my family and for my neighbors as residents in San Jose. I'm also against the people who don't live in this area to say their support today to this program because it's unfair to the resident living nearby. It happened to our neighborhood at the end of the October.
Ning?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the council number to give me opportunity to say. So as a resident in the noble side, I'm strongly against using the noble side as a homeless camp. So I think that should be a better choice because for the residential area and libraries or schools, those definitely are bad ideas and it's creating potential harm risk to residents around them. And also I noticed a lot of people who's working for the organizations or for the agencies are speaking tonight. They don't represent the residents in the area. So stop using your idea and forcing the ideas to the residents around. Thank you.
Topper?
Hello, yeah, I'm a resident of South San Jose and I'm not from Sacred Heart or any other agency imposing their politics on other communities. I strongly oppose the EIH at the Cottle location. It's dangerous for everyone. Traffic is already highly congested in the area and it's very dangerous to cross the road in a car, let alone on bike or on foot. There are plenty of surrounding areas that can offer far more amenable solutions to folks. There has also been no mention of management for crime or disruption that can will inevitably be brought to the area and can already be seen by regular incidents in the nearby shopping areas like Target and Safeway. These these issues will only increase the danger to our area for our families and our children. And we need shelters, but not by imposing them upon neighborhoods at any cost. Thank you.
Austin?
Hi, my name's Austin. I've lived in Palmyra District Ten for over twenty-four years and I strongly support the EIH at Cottle VTA. Many of my neighbors are concerned about safety and I'm a current graduate student in public health and rising medical students, so I want to give you all some evidence. In twenty eighteen, a study by The Guardian found that in both Portland and Seattle, tiny home sites were actually linked with a thirty-one percent average decrease in community crime compared to before the sites were built. Dr. Elias Cohen at UCLA found that in two thousand twenty-one, that within eighteen months of providing homes for the unhoused, communities' crime rates decreased, emergency department visits decreased, and employment rates in the community actually increased. So this just demonstrates further that providing for people's basic needs, especially unhoused, reduces crime and improves the community and its safety long term, which we already saw in some of the slides I presented earlier this meeting with the decreased police calls and fire fire department calls. So, thank you.
Hello, hello?
Yes.
I assume that's me. Really quickly, you know, we talked about the open space areas, Penitencia Creek and stuff. Open space areas and environmental areas provide important access to less less privileged areas of the city who otherwise might not have access to travel to such places further away. These areas provide vital access for children.
Sir, I think you're probably calling in about a different item.
No, this is about that. Well, unless you're only solely on the Cottle Road area, is that what, are you?
I'm sorry, I thought you heard something about open space.
Well, I'm talking about, you know, Penitencia Creek was on your list, right?
Okay, thank you.
And and those in that area, that's that's in an area that doesn't have access to that. That's important educational stuff for those families and those kids and it needs to be leveraged better. You know, we have lots of pay varies over in the city, which are near vacant buildings. We have land owned by large businesses and companies which have been purchased for future development that remain unused. Many of these areas have been denaturized in order that there will not be any EIR issues when the time comes for them to develop the land. We could leverage that and use that land for for these kinds of housing.
Melvin?
Hi, good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Simi Jose residing near Cottle VTA and I'm a registered nurse working at Kaiser. I'm speaking on behalf of my, one of many healthcare workers at Kaiser. I, first of all, I would like to say I'm not against homelessness, but we are against the proposed EIH site at Cottle Road. I'm staying beside the Cottle Road side and I need to walk back and forth from work to my home. Some nights I have to be on call and I do not want to feel unsafe or risk my safety at night. Please consider removing EIH from Cottle Road. Please consider fair sharing of EIH distribution. Cottle Road VTA station is one of the busiest transit village in San Jose.
Xianghao?
Hello, could you hear me? Hi, good evening, mayor and the city council. So I'm against using the Cottle VTA station as the EIH home site. So actually, I just off the eighty-five highway, I using the highway only only day to go to work and 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 go home. So I feel it's very unsafe to use it as the side for EIH home site. Thank you.
Selvi?
Oh, hi, my name is Selvi. I live in the neighborhood, I live here for almost twenty-four years now. My work is at Nort San Jose. I take light rail quite often. There are two things I wanted mainly highlight today. Basically, some of some Sacred Heart people from Sacred Heart, they were highlighting the safe aspect of EIH. But that is that is going to be my main concern here. That site is not safe for homeless people mainly because of all the ramps. There are four three ramps with no pedestrian crossing. I walk the road up and down many times. Every time when I cross the ramp, I have to be extremely careful. I need to make sure the cars are not coming so fast. And putting people with mental health issues or someone with the drug problem, right? In a busy intersection, I feel it is totally just.
Wang?
Hi, thank you for giving me such an opportunity. I'm a twenty-year resident in Barasa. People who support the EIH tonight didn't realize that we are not against the homeless. We don't disagree with building shelters for the homeless. We are against building the units in the noble site because it is a park, it is near the elementary schools, libraries and water resources. People who support EIH should help to create a list of eligible sets that are away from children, libraries, parks and water resources. Because children are our future, parks and water resources should be protected under California law. Thank you so much.
John? John?
Hi, this is Shibi John. I am a resident of South San Jose for the last twenty years. I would like to request the city council to reconsider the decision of the Cottle VTA as the community was not communicated at any 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 point in that decision-making process. We would like to receive the facts, we would like to receive the data before proceeding proceeding further on this. Thank you.
J L Peng?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So firstly, I want to make it clear, I'm not against EIH. I like the idea. I'm just against putting it at the noble site. People have been against this site for the entire half year since day one. Reasons, you know, too close to school, occupying parkland, you know, water resources. I don't want to repeat it again, but people have, I just want to say that people have been putting a lot of effort finding alternative sites, which was what EIH office asked us to do. I think we found like thirty-five alternative sites. I personally, I personally visited four sites in District Four during my work hour. I was lucky, you know, my manager didn't catch me. And anyway, so I think even, you know, EIH office after so many study is recommending removing, you know, noble side from the list right now. So please consider, you know, just choose a better site to serve this EIH project. That's gonna benefit everyone, you know, better. Thank you.
Kate? Kate?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, so my name is Kate and I live in the beautiful noble neighborhood with my husband and my daughter. We also expanding a new one. So we support the EIH, but choose the right site, not all noble. I want to point out one thing that I noticed tonight. So many people from the other SOS agency said we criminalize the unhoused people, which I don't know how did they come out with that idea, which is totally not true. Nobody is saying all the unhoused people are criminals, but the fact is, high percentage of them are. They use drugs, they have criminal records, which is not safe for the schools, libraries and all the neighborhood. I personally donated clothes, money, blanket, toys every year to help people. But I just cannot risk my own family, my children's safety to support this noble site, which is absolutely a joke. And also this is so far from the convenience store, grocery store. I don't know who are you guys help with.
Alex Shore?
Good evening, council, it's Alex Shore with Catalyze SV. You know, our members frequently advocate for affordable and permanent supportive housing sites. We didn't have a chance to look at these, but I believe if our members did, they would say a very important point, which is there are no perfect sites. Or maybe there are very few perfect sites. And yet there are also very few sites in our city where we can find this type of housing. That's why it's so hard to find it. That's why it takes so many meetings and so much discussion. And so with that in mind, we really need to move forward with building as much permanent supportive and interim housing for folks as we can. As we always say, the only solution to homelessness is to build more housing and that includes all of the folks who are concerned or opposing this project. This is how we solve it. If you don't want homelessness in your community, then allow housing in your community.
Shi Jun? Shi Jun? Yu Wang? Yu Wang? Okay, Carol? Carol?
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Carol. I'm a resident in Barriessa area for fifteen years. I totally support EHS, but I'm against the idea on building EHS on noble side. Noble side is a park for many years. People close by are enjoying the park. The kids from Noble Elementary and Piedmont Middle School go there for PE classes and also learn about the nature, about the wild animals. And even the Barriessa School District Union is totally against to build the EHS on noble side. So here we respectfully to ask the city council, please do not destroy the park and listen to the voices of the residents from this area. And please choose a better site and vote no for noble site. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Madhikar?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Madhukar Thakur. I live in District Ten, within less than a mile from the Cottle Road VTA station. I am for, I'm supporting getting the homeless into EHS, EIH housing. However, when we say the community should take care of the homeless, I want to define the community as the entire city of San Jose, all the districts in the city, not just District Two and Ten. It's known that within District Two and Ten, together these two districts house sixty-three point eight percent of the EIH units or are planned to house that much percent. So that, I want to make sure that we share, as a community of the city of San Jose, we share solving this problem and not just focus on Districts Two and Ten having to solve this problem on their own. Thank you.
Emily?
Hi, my name is Emily. I live in District Six and I'm a member of Serge at Sacred Heart. I'm speaking in solidarity with Rex and SOS at Sacred Heart. I have to say, it just really, really hurts my soul to see us, the citizens of San Jose, ignore the needs of our most vulnerable neighbors. And emergency interim housing is what's really good for all of us. We need more housing, not the criminalization of the unhoused. So I strongly urge the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services and more funding for city staff to provide those services. Thank you.
Jeffy?
Hello, good evening. My name is Jeffy Colsa. I'm a member of the San Jose Unified Equity Coalition and I'm also a resident and voter of District Six. And I'm speaking in solidarity with Rex and SOS at Sacred Heart. Our coalition supports the safety and wellness of students and young people in San Jose and far too many of them experience homelessness right in our city. So I'm calling in to support new emergency interim housing. I support the staff recommendations for more services and outreach at all emergency interim housing sites and more funding for our city workers to provide those services. And I support the staff recommendation not to implement no encampment zones. I'm also calling to oppose any measure that would increase the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
Maggie? Maggie?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, council members. My name is Maggie. So I want to express my opinion. Cottle VTA parking lot is not a proper site for EIH site. It is a highway concentration in between entranceway to Highway eighty-five and the latter. It is a highway concentration in between entrance way to Highway eighty-five and the later rail and Highway eighty-five. After hundreds of new apartments and houses were built on Corte Road next to Highway eighty-five, every morning, when I drove my two young kids to school, the road to Highway eighty-five has a much heavier traffic than several years ago. So every, every day, we have to get up earlier to make kids be on time to school. Traffic will be worse by moving more people into the community. We also have safety concern. Just to the north of the proposed VTA site is Village Oaks Shopping Mall. It has C V Target and many other stores.
Sandra?
Good evening, my name is Sandra Asher. I'm a twenty-year resident, taxpayer and voter in District Ten. I am also a member of SURGE at Sacred Heart and the REX Committee. Please trust your hardworking staff's proposal and approve all EIH and vote against the no encampment zones. We consistently hear that homelessness is the number one concern for San Jose. How can we possibly solve this problem if every proposal is opposed? Stop criminalizing mental illness and saying they are dangerous. My mother and my son have significant mental illness. I assure you, they are not dangerous to anyone other than themselves. Folks in EIH are not homeless anymore. They have shelter, water, bathrooms and support to get them into permanent housing. Every speaker tonight who lives near an EIH has spoken in support of this project. Please listen to them, thank you.
Mushpikol Alom? Mush, Mushpikol Alom?
Emily?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I live near Corte here for more than two years under my family's background. Although I do agree that homelessness needs to be addressed, I feel, we're not able to get. But we do believe that it should be taken into consideration that so that communities in the San Jose could bring all the responsibility. Put the sites nicely, that evenly, that would be a better solution. The other thing to consider over here is that moving people into a busy area is a good idea or not, right? And look into other solutions around the.
Nat S? Nat, I see you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Okay, Nat, we're not hearing you, I'm going to move on to the next person. If you fix your audio, then raise your hand again and we'll call on you again. SS? SS, I see you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Hey, I'm going to do the same.
My, my name is Sami and I'm from District Ten. I'm here to provide you some details regarding the homelessness site, which has been proposed on the Penitentia Creek. The, the case is that this particular park is an open preserve, which has been utilized by the, by the locals close by as an open park. As well as there is proximity to preschools and, and a library. Considering this, that there will be EIH or so on at this particular location, I think it would be even, you're putting even them at harm's way because there are no close by convenience stores, there is no way you can house them properly. And the, it is very easy for city to say that it will be, there will be reduction in crime or so on. But we would like to understand that more deeper before this assessment is made.
Lily and Teresa, in person, Lily, come down to the microphone, Teresa line up behind her. Go ahead.
I'm Lily, I live in the, around the Corte, in the Palmier area. I'm not against EIH, but I against EIH building the Corte Road, a Corte Road station. Because, you know, around so many residents live over there, have child, have daycare, has hospital over there, so many people, it's dangerous. And also among the share is a, you see, oh, it's not the share very clearly. We do, and it's not good to communicate with our residents live over there. We just know like a week ago, but in two days, we have almost fourteen hundred people to sign the petition. I think all the city, you can see that one, in two days. In the holiday, in the Thanksgiving Day, we, we don't have any Thanksgiving Day. Everyone working together, when we know that. It's not good for our communities. We have so many children live over there, have child, have the, you know, the girl, have high school, have the, you know, elementary school, have the, you know, the daycare. So please consider for that, you know, if you, you know, the pictures cannot share, but.
Next speaker?
Honorable council members, my name is Teresa from District Four. I'm here to object to building the tiny house at Noble site for three reasons. One, it's a place just across the elementary school, middle school and the library. There are bigger concerns of safety issues. The second, it's a park and reserved for people recreation. The third reason, it's not appropriate place to build a tiny house for the homeless people. Because it's not close to the public transportation, not close to the supermarket, not close to any social service. Therefore, for the reasons above, honorable council members, please consider to permanently remove the noble site from the list. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Barbara? Barbara?
Hope, you know, homeless, but I, I think we against, you know, building the place in, near Corte parking place. There are a lot of, you know, neighbors already mentioned before me. I think we should consider the, you know, community already residing there and not put like a pin force on the local residents. We wanted to build, can you guys move to like further, like places actually not established, like the south, south, south side, you know, even, I mean, you know, you can bus people. I used to work, you know, to make a living, I drive two hours every, you know, every day, just to try to, you know, make my own living. I think you, you should.
Hyin?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Hyin, I'm a resident of Barriasa area for fifteen years and I'm voter for more than twenty years. So I'm here just try to express my opinion. I'm a working mom with young kids. So my concern really, I, I, I love to help homeless people. When I saw them on the street, I always land food or money. However, building the quick, so-called quick build center or, you know, the emergency house in the Barriasa area or in the Noble area, it's not, it's, it's not right. And I hope we can vote no for it. Because there are three school nearby and this is a park for kids to have PE class, for seniors to, to work, work by, you know, on the daily basis. So I don't know why we have to sacrifice our seniors and kids' life to, to, for this, just, you know, and also it's a call, it's the program itself is a call.
Shi Jun?
Hi, my name is Ji Jun. I'm actually abroad, but I'm a resident of Noble area and I'm against building the site at Noble. Well, so when the Titanic was sinking, who were allowed to enter the lifeboat? The rich, the poor or the homeless? No, 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 it's women and children. Because humanity is all about next generation and legacy. We knew that over a century ago. I'm just surprised that even nowadays, in the center of the universe, Silicon Valley, we don't know about that. We're giving our way to homeless, sacrificing our children. Who is a sensible normal person would even consider building hundreds of homeless tiny homes within walking distance of not only one, but several schools? Is that because not your kids that you're screwing with? Well, if that's the case, remember that noble community will fight you because you're screwing with our most precious thing in our life.
On?
Hello, my name is Tom, I'm a resident of District, District Four. And I just wanted to state my objection to the noble, to the noble site as a EIH location. I urge council members to consider publicly remove it from the list and make it a park. Thank you.
Jis, Jis Mol? It's J I S M O L. I may have butchered it when I called your name.
Can you hear me? Hello? Okay, can you hear, okay, yeah, okay. All right, hey, my name is Jis Mol, I'm a Palmier resident in Corte Road. I object tiny homes, I'm concerned about the safety. I have three small kids and I'm worried about it. And there is schools around this area. And then my second concern is why all these tiny homes are moving to South San Jose? There is like more, you know, locations, like more slot on this small radius. I'm concerned about that too, why, why can't we just spread it out? The third concern is like people who is not living around this area is, you know, not around this area, they are making comments, they are like more favorable. Why? They are not even living around this area. So I'm concerned about that too, thank you.
I don't know if you heard me, Kunta?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Kunta Tsai, I live close by the Corte VTA station for twenty-two years. So a question for supporter of EIH at Corte VTA. I notice most of them don't live here like I do. The question is, do you support reducing carbon footprint and mass transportation in the city? If your answer is yes, you should vote no for EIH at Corte VTA. Corte VTA is a park and ride station. Someone claimed the parking lot is in low utilization, which is a false claim. I have historical satellite imagery to prove that. And during pre-temptation time, the parking lot is more than seventy percent full. If the EIH taking away fifty percent of the parking space, where are those three people think car going to park? Putting a EIH next to VTA parking is ridiculous idea. A totally defeat VTA park and ride purpose. Who want to park their variable vehicle next to the encampment? With few people riding VTA, more car will be stuck on the highway and the city will ask for more.
Sigrid?
Hi, my name is Sigrid from Santa Clara and I'm a member of SURGE at Sacred Heart. Speaking in solidarity with REX and SOS at Sacred Heart. Regarding EIH sites, we've had similar conversations in Santa Clara. Community can't wait until we have a perfect site that works for everyone. If we want a perfect school location, EIH is never going to happen. Unsheltered people are already members of our neighborhoods. And so the way I see it, I have a choice to support shelter, even in my backyard or leave these neighbors unhoused in my backyard. So why wouldn't I ensure that as many people as possible have a roof over their heads? I ask the council to approve new emergency interim housing and the staff recommendation for more services and outreach at all emergency interim housing sites. Thank you.
Jeff? Jeff? Okay, moving on to Vera? Vera?
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So I'm a resident in the Noble site and I'm strongly against allocating this EIH around the libraries and the schools. Because it's, we don't feel safe. So basically, it's, we don't feel safe. It doesn't matter what you say, but we don't feel safe with the resident around it. So please consider the residence idea. I heard so many people are from Sacred Heart or some other agency and they are reading similar transcript. So who organized you to speak for the resident? Or you speak for your organization? Are you taking any benefit from this? How do I know? So for my, in my opinion, you don't speak for us. And we want the councilman to listen to the resident who doesn't feel comfortable with such arrangement. We are not against homeless, we're against this arrangement. We need a better solution. Thank you.
Natasha? Natasha?
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
All right, hi, my name is Natasha. I'm a new teacher and someone who has grown up my entire life in District Ten. I've been living here for the past twenty-five years. I never knew the severity of how the home situation was in District Ten until I went to school in downtown San Jose. District Ten residents have no idea with the severity of this issue. I have taught kids that are homeless, I have had friends that are homeless, I've had professors that were homeless. When you were saying these people, you're denying these people housing? They are regular people who are in our community that are just trying to get by. All of us who work these jobs that don't make enough money are at risk from one or two bad days to end up becoming homeless. I stand in solidarity with REX and SOS Sacred Heart because we have barely had any EIH housing compared to Districts Three, Six, Seven, Two, Five and Eight. District Ten actually only has about sixteen, I believe. We need to pull our own weight and support our homeless community instead of gatekeeping our community and sections of our city. Thank you.
Alice?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to say thank you and I'm, I'm a resident in D Four, close to Noble. And I strongly against the noble side because we, it's very close to school and we have the safety concern and Noble is a park. I heard a lot of people from the same agency, they have the sense, they, against the supporter from agency and the organization, reading similar transcriptions. They don't present, present resident or real people. I want the councilman to hear the voice from the resident who is in D Two and hear the voice from us. So I want the mayor and the councilman to vote no for the noble site. Thank you.
Yu Wang?
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Yu Wang, I'm leaving in, near Corte Station. I'm here strongly against build EIH at Corte Station simply because this kind of EIS should not build near the highway traffic area. And the Corte Station is a really, really highway traffic area in the morning. Even in the long time, a lot of people go on Highway eighty-five to the work. Second, cannot be near the hospital location since Kaiser permanently is at this location. And also, like many people talking about shouldn't build near the library or school. This location close to library and the school. This location close to library and the school. Uh, another one is shouldn't concern highway, highwayly raised resident area. Just that you look the, uh, northeast of the corner.
Jing Chen and Reverend Bainbridge? First one to the microphone, just go ahead and start.
Reverend Dana Bainbridge, Pastor Urban Sanctuary. Uh, I find, I'm mindful of the fact that, uh, we're having this conversation at a time in our Christian, uh, season in which we recognize, um. La Posada, the traveling of Jesus and, well, Jesus family while he was preparing to be born, uh, from inn to inn. And trying to find a place to stay. And so it's rather painful for me to listen to so much testimony. Um, of not providing a place for people to stay, uh, in our community, um, during this particular season. When we, as Christians, are particularly mindful of the need to open our doors and to welcome those who have no place to stay. To those who are fearful of, uh, what might happen in your neighborhood, I would say they're already unhoused people all around you. It's so, it would be so helpful to have them be in a place where there's actually the structures and the support. And it will make your neighborhoods safer to have them be in that kind of situation.
Thank you.
Uh, where they can have that kind of.
Next speaker? Jing Chen? Okay, Jeff?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I am a resident of D four. And, uh, I, I think, uh, everybody here, uh, should know that the D four residents have followed this plan. For a long, long time, multiple years. And even any for this year, we have held multiple meetings to express our concerns. And I think the D four residents has made it clear that the people in D four, we care about homeless. But we strongly against Noble. This is simply not a proper site. We want everybody here, especially our councilman, uh, to, to recall his discussion, his lengthy discussion. With all the residents in D four. I feel interesting that this night, there are so many agencies. Has jumped from nowhere to join this meeting. Where is that from? Do they want to get a cut from this pro- program? We all know how bureaucracy the system is.
Thomas?
Hi, thank you. I just, uh, I'm a, I'm a resident of District Four and I just wanted to let, to, to. Express my solidarity with my District Four neighbors. I have been a resident of this neighborhood for over twenty years. It's a beautiful neighborhood. We do care about the homeless. But the Noble site is not a good site for an EIH. I strongly urge the council members to vote it off the list. Thank you.
Gayastri?
Hi, this is Gayastri. I'm a resident, um, in Palmyra, um, close to Cot- Cottle, uh, Road. Um, I'm sure a lot of the residents here have echoed this, but I just wanted to reiterate, uh, you know, that we already see. Um, uh, you know, when I take my kid and dog, uh, down the road to like Safeway or Target to do our grocery shopping, like we see. Enough of homeless already. And it's like, um, it's, it's quite a, it's, it's a very disturbing and scary instance at times. So. Um, I urge the, uh, council members to ensure that we spread out, um, the EIH. I'm, you know, I'm totally in favor. Um, of providing, um, houses and providing shelters for them. Um, I think it's a noble thought, but I hope you can also consider that, you know, we have kids here. Um, you know, my, my daughter is like a year old. I do want her to grow up in a safe society. So I'd appreciate if you give that a thought and, um, uh, find, find another site for this. Thanks.
Claire?
Hello, my name is Claire. Um, so I'm a, a ra- resident of District Four. Uh, I'm not against the homeless. However, I'm against building, uh, uh, building, uh, this housing system. In that, uh, in, in Noble site because we have many schools nearby and we have library and this site is a park. Uh, so please, uh, councilmen, please consider, um, our, our voice. And, um, the other organizations, uh, you know, we have been, I, I have been, uh. Coming to the city hall for many times, but I'm working mom. I cannot come all the time. So, uh, please consider our voice. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Okay, well, I think all the members of the community came out to speak, uh, on all sides of this. We appreciate there's a lot of passionate, uh, sentiment. Involved here and a lot of concern. And I think, um, you know, I, I want to speak for, if I can, for a moment. Everybody from the city community, I think we have, uh, the, here at the city, we've got a lot of people working incredibly hard to make sure. That these housing communities are good neighbors. And they are, all the evidence so far indicates that they are, uh, very good neighbors. And. Um, I, I appreciate the hard work of everybody to, to make that happen. All right, let's go to the council. Councilmember Cohen?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, first, I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke. I know this is a, um. An issue that raises a lot of, uh, passion and concerns and it's important, um, for all of us on council to address. Uh, what is a crisis in the city of San Jose? Um, and I, as I've been saying, it's really important that we have these, uh, emergency interim housing sites. Throughout the city, um, and have locations for people to, um, have safe transition from be, living on the streets. To living on, uh, to, to being able to get into more permanent, safe, supportive environments. Um, and I also wanted to spell right away, uh, something that I've heard throughout this discussion about, well, District Four doesn't have a problem. Why should District Four have? A, um, EIH site. The latest homeless count was just released. And, uh, the number was four hundred and thirty-three homeless residents in the District Four, which was the fifth most of any district in the city of San Jose. And I'm committed to making sure that we are part of the solution and, and have options for people. And kind of an interesting juxtaposition, the number one. Uh, concern we receive from residents or that our office receives from residents is concerns about. People who are living unhoused in their neighborhoods, in the creeks, along the roads, in unsafe, unsanitary conditions. Um, and without these kinds of interim solutions, we're not going to be able to actually resolve that problem. So it's important that we do it. Having said that, it's also important to do it right. Um, and as I said, when this came to council in June and we were faced only with a single option in District Four. Doing it with speed is not necessarily better than doing it correctly. Um, and now I would actually say doing it. With, with speed, um. If you do it, actually what I should say is either do it right or it won't work. And I think we've learned. That focusing only on a specific site and trying to do it quickly is, all, all that's ended up doing is delaying us. And that's what's been a frustration of mine because. We do need a site in District Four and, and I think we have a lot of options in District Four. And I've worked with staff on many of those options. And I think we have found a site that actually has, is it, is it a good location? And the frustration is that we could have been designing and building that site by this time if we had put in to get together this process at a sooner date. Um, it was clear to me that, that the site on, uh, what is parkland by Noble Avenue was not the optimal site in District Four. Um, and I'm glad now that we have a site that is workable. And I will just talk a little bit about that site, the Saroni VTA site. Um, there's a lot of space there. Um, it's one block from a light rail line. Um, it's about two or three blocks from a shopping center with a Target, right by a lot of transit, uh, uh, transportation infrastructure. So it actually is a good location. Um, and we did, when we did outreach there, um, there wasn't, um, much concern by the community in that part of San Jose. So I'm, um, happy that we've, we've gotten to this point now and ready to move forward, uh, on that site. I do want to just talk about, um, just the, the items in my memo. There are, there's been concern from, um, folks, obvi- for obvious reasons that live near the penitentiary reach to park space. About the long-term protection of that site. So I've just strengthened the language a little bit in my first recommendation. Um, to use the word permanently remove the Noble site from implementation of EIH. And then moving forward with the activities that are needed to plan, um. The, uh, EIH at Saroni. In addition, we talked about this in the last item about safe parking, but we put it into this memo here. We should be going back through that list of EIH proposals that came from residents and our office and other places in the city. And try to find out which ones of those are appropriate for RV parking sites because. Of those four hundred and thirty, I think about a hundred in District Four are RVs. And we need to find a parking for RVs. Um, in addition to this kind of interim housing program. The other thing, the, the thing about, of long-term protection of the park, um, is an important action. I've put in a recommendation. Just to, I think aligned with what the city staff is already doing to create that citywide definition for parkland chartered status and go through and. Make sure that all spaces that meet that definition are then, um, uh, included on that, uh, list so that. We know for sure in the future how we've defined those spaces and, and have an easily referenced list. We found out through this process. That there is no comprehensive list anywhere and there are a lot of sites that are in question. So we will, we will do that, but we need to go through that process, which will take a few months. Um, but we'll remove the Noble site from con- consideration in the meantime. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is, um. In terms of expediting this process, I'm hopeful that we can consider some creative, um, ways of potentially getting. Going out and getting bids for the, uh, construction of the sites, the buildings that are going to be on the site regardless of where we might end up. And pretend, and try to get some bidders and some, uh, suppliers in place. So that we can move quickly once we identify sites to actually stand them up. Because if we do these things sequentially. Uh, where we first come to an agreement with, you know, go through a month or two to come to an agreement with VTA on the land use. And then do the design and then need to go out and procure, we could be talking about a year before we have the site. So I'm just hopeful. And I didn't put it in the memo, but I'm hopeful. That we can consider some, uh, ways of doing some bids now to start that third step so that when we have the design, we're ready to install. And I know there might be some. Site-specific issues, but I think we can probably get some universal, um, uh. Types of divi- of units, uh, lined up. So I, I can, maybe I'll ask that question. What do you, what is the thought about being able to do something that, that does things in parallel so we can move a little faster?
Councilmember, I think we pretty much all agree in the need for urgency. Uh, Matt Kano, the Director of Public Works is, is here, I believe. And so. We're just going to ask him to, to, to come down and, and give you a sense. I know that we're working on a few things internally.
Thank you, Councilmember Matt Kano, Director of Public Works. Yeah, we are continuing to explore the opportunity of possibly, um. Defining the type of units and procuring the units ahead of time. Um, we're also right now working on a request for, an RFQ. Um, to get design builders pre-qualified for these units. And so that's already in progress.
Good.
And so that'll be posting in January so that when the units are ready to move forward, even if we don't, when the projects are ready to move forward, even if we don't. Um, pre-get all the units ourselves, we'll have a short list of design build firms that we can pair our proposals out to and get responses quicker. So we, but we are continuing to explore the idea that you suggested as well to see what works best.
Great. I appreciate that. I think that's a great idea to pre-qualify the right, uh, contractors so that we'll be ready to go. Um, just a couple, a couple of quick questions about, uh, the service enhancement area. The service enhancement area would be applied then to all existing sites and not just the new sites. I, is that just, is that correct? I just want to verify that.
Thank you, Councilmember. John Cicero, Director Parks and Rec. Yes.
Okay.
We can do the five existing, up to another five that we would build, plus a couple safe parking sites with that two and a half million dollar, uh, recommendation.
Great. I really appreciate that. That's a, that's a great service. And I think it'll, it, it's a good compromise that will help us. Um, I've been a little concerned about. The practicality of, of no encampment zones or anything more detailed than that. And I, I think you outlined it well. I, is it true? I mean, our experience from school, no encampment zones, for example, is that we have a hundred fifty feet buffer, but people just measure a hundred fifty-one feet and set up their camp there. Is that right?
That's correct. That does happen.
Yeah. So it's not clear to me that whatever length, the distance you put, that you've really solved the problem or, or helped a community necessarily, depending on the layout and as that map showed. What it would look like. So I do appreciate that, that we, we have some, um. Service enhancement that will keep areas cleaner and under control and safe, but doesn't necessarily rely on the heavy-handed approach. Um, so I'm, I'm going to, um, move my memo. And this isn't meaning to preclude other memos that are on, that are out there for consideration. I move my memo, which includes staff recommendations and the other items on mine. As I've learned through this process, it's important for me as a council member and all of us to take advice of the folks who know better in the areas where their sites are. So. I'm not going to presume anybody else's memo. And I want to listen to their input and be willing to take friendly amendments on other memos, but I'm going to move my memo to start right now.
Second?
And then just make one other comment. Thank the folks at Noble for their continued engagement. I look forward to. Being out there to plant trees in the spring at the space. We're, we're getting, we're going to get the, bring in the resources for that. And you can save me a T-shirt. Thank you.
One clarification, uh, Councilmember, um, this is Omar Passins. Again, just, uh, your memo makes a reference to e- e- expanding the neighbor, um, enhanced services. To existing and future potential safe parking sites. Is that, that right as well? I just, I thought I had read that.
I, I think it says that.
Yeah.
Um, I, it's been a long day, but, 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 yeah, I mean, the idea would be that, that it would, that as, I think it's based on what's in your memo. That's talking about service enhancements at existing and future sites. I don't think mine referred to that element of it at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. Um, well, I want to echo the thanks to staff for all of, all of your work over the, over the months and, and. The work that's gone into evaluating dozens of sites and the conversation about enhanced services this evening. Um, I'm certainly committed to the shared goal of getting to, to the thousand new quick build units that, that the council is committed to. I really, I think that the model has proved to be the fastest, most cost-effective way to get people off of our streets, which I think should be our primary goal as a city. Um, and I want to thank and recognize Councilor Cohen for his work around the Noble site. I appreciate how much work went into that and look forward to. Voting to remove that site from the list as we work to make it a, a proper park. Um, and I also want to thank the members of the public who participated tonight. I know these are really, really tough decisions that understandably drive a lot of emotion. I, I think we're. Better off though for having this open dialogue, hearing from diverse perspectives, even, even when we disagree. So I, I want to run through a few questions and most of them will be about the Cottle site in District Ten. And first, Jim, I just thought if I could go to you or maybe Omar, whoever's most appropriate first. You know, I know we have a lot of residents, many of whom are here tonight, who pretty recently learned that Cottle had become staff's preferred. Site, uh, no longer Great Oaks. And I was just hoping that you could tell us, remind everyone or share with everyone a little bit of the process for how we got here and why Cottle is now staff's. Preferred site over Great Oaks.
Yes, Councilmember Jim Warpall from the City Manager's Office. As you recall, back in June, uh, we made a staff recommendation to pursue the eighty-five Great Oaks site as the recommended site in District Ten. We had a couple of alternatives as well that we had put out there in the event we couldn't advance the eighty-five Great Oaks site. Uh, at, uh, Santa Teresa, the, the light rail station there, and then at Santa Teresa and eighty-five, two locations. But we thought eighty-five Great Oaks was the best site at that point in time. We did recognize that Caltrans was contemplating selling a portion of the eighty-five Great Oaks site to a, uh, a company called ES Volta, who was contemplating a battery and transmission. Storage facility. Um, so we didn't know that we could deliver on that particular site. You recommended and the council approved that we continue to look for alternative sites in District Ten and in District Four. Um, Deputy City Manager Omar Passins, in the summer initiated community outreach. And also initiated a process whereby members of the community could suggest alternate sites. In addition, we went back and evaluated sites that we had previously put on the list and weren't recommending to go forward to see if there were potential among those sites. So through that process this summer, we brought in many new sites in District Four and in District Ten and evaluated many new sites. We published that list. We published that list in early September and initiated the evaluation, the process that we use. We've, we've published those guidelines and we used those guidelines to evaluate dozens of sites. Through that process, the two sites tonight that we're recommending, the Saroni site in District 4 and the Cottle site in District 10, were suggested by the community. It was an anonymous process. We just asked that people suggest recommended sites and give us some basic information and we would take the evaluation from there. And we did that in the August and September, October timeframe. We're recommending today the Cottle site for a couple of reasons. One, the size of the site. It's sufficiently sized to get 100-unit EIH facility. The shape is better than the 85 Great Oaks site. That particular site, although it has a lot of acreage, is very long and narrow and it's subject to Caltrans Clear Zone setbacks where the off-ramp is at. And then since Caltrans has sold 25 feet on the south side of the property, it would be potentially subject to a setback from that, making the project a very difficult design, a very difficult layout. If you can envision kind of a, a long, linear snake-type design. Those are part of the reasons why we think Cottle would be a better location. It's, it's a shape that would allow for an easier design. We believe from a cost comparison standpoint, the Cottle site compared to 85 Great Oaks or 85 Santa Teresa would be more costly on a per-unit basis, and we would be able to get sufficient units to get towards the 1,000-unit goal that the council has directed staff to pursue. There are probably a variety of other reasons as well that we can consider why Cottle made sense. It's closer to a grocery store for people to get supplies. It is close to medical facilities. It is close to transit as well. People in our unsheltered community probably have less use of automobiles, more need for transit. It's a light rail station. A bus, a bus station is right there as well. So for those reasons, we think Cottle is a superior site. We do recommend, though, that we continue to evaluate or keep in consideration the other sites in the event we can't come to agreement with VTA. VTA has been very supportive and positive thus far in that, but we think we should, you know, keep other sites in the mix until we know we have a secured lease agreement with the owners of sites.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. I think that would be prudent to keep those other sites in the mix. Obviously, my preference in the spirit of trying to better spread out the sites has been for the Almeden Light Rail spur that's no longer in use. Have we, I know I've asked you this, but have we triple-checked that VTA is not interested in using that site?
Yeah, I can say I've at least triple-checked it. I've had at least three conversations with the Director of Real Estate at VTA, and they're using it as a light rail operations center, and it is the Bus Line 64 Park and Ride Lot at that location. And they, until they figure out their long-term plans on light rail operations, they say that is not an available site to the city. And I've heard that on three separate occasions from VTA.
So you actually triple-checked?
Yes.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. And then in terms of Santa Teresa and 85, which we've been discussing, we haven't actually proposed a site plan to Caltrans. What would be next steps on that site? And what is the likelihood of it being viable?
Yeah. The, the next step with Caltrans would be to show them or discuss with them our potential layout. It's a site that we've looked at. It's, it's a smaller site. It has slopes off of one side of it, undeveloped slope that would need to be addressed. So it is a smaller site, and to get up to 60 units, which would make it a smaller facility, smaller community, we would need to request an exception to the Caltrans Clear Zone requirements, the 30-foot setback from the off-ramp. So we would have to build our circulation and fire lane inside their circulation, inside their clear zone. So it would require an exception from Caltrans for us to be able to build the facility just to get to 60 units. So as you can imagine, if you're making the investment in all the utilities and everything that goes into a site, if you're only going to yield 45 to 60 units, and our goal is obviously, you know, to, overall to get to 1,000, that isn't getting us towards that goal nearly enough, but the cost is still going to be, you know, pretty close to the same whether you go at a facility at 100 units, you know, versus 45 to 60. So there, it's just the cost per unit, we don't think makes as much sense in that location.
If we wanted to keep that one open, though, how much more work and time would it take to share a potential site map with Caltrans and get their feedback?
So two points. We could probably initiate some discussions soon and show them our initial layout concept idea, but in working with Caltrans over the years, they would not approve anything until we have a more complete design plan, where we have plans that they literally could look at, almost like a sign-off type level of plan. So they ultimately don't approve our projects until we show them truly engineered design plans. So it would be a two-step process. One, we'd initially reach out to them, discuss it with them, and then figure out what level of detail we would have to provide for them to actually consider and approve that exception.
Okay. But just to clarify, your recommendation tonight does keep Santa Teresa and Great Oaks on the list, and you're planning to continue conversations?
Our recommendation is to pursue Cottle and Saroni as our lead sites while we continue to consider other options in the event those sites don't work out. And the steps that we would take, we are meeting with ES Volta, the company that bought the land near the 85 Great Oaks site. We're meeting with them tomorrow just to understand their project, and we could initiate a follow-up conversation with Caltrans as well. But our recommendation is to also move on the Cottle site with VTA as well, and that would be where we'd also be putting a lot of focus to advance.
Got it. Yeah, I'd certainly like to request that you continue the conversation with Caltrans around Santa Teresa, and I know Councilor Jimenez has a memo that he'll probably discuss, but I think it would be kind of aligned with the spirit of that. Just moving on, I'm conscious of time here. I'll try to speed up and wrap up my comments here in a moment. You know, a concern that we've heard consistently from residents around Cottle is the use of the VTA lot. Do we have any confirmation from VTA of the utilization rates pre-pandemic? I feel like that should be unknowable.
Yeah. So, so we, we have had conversations with VTA. I have not seen data. They're checking their records to see if they have specific data about it. Their experience is that it is not, the lot does not fill for transit purposes. They've experienced non-transit use at that site in the past and probably more recently. It's probably the Kaiser Hospital that's, that's driving a lot of that non-transit use. Historically, they felt like it's been an underutilized park and ride lot, not unlike Santa Teresa or the Snell location as well. There's capacity in their park and ride lots. They are still looking into their records, but a couple of perspectives on that. VTA has always considered a number of their sites to be future development sites, and this is one of them that they would anticipate long-term being a future development site. In our general plan, it's zoned commercial development, so it's something that we probably would anticipate someday having some level of commercial development on as well. And to the extent, you know, that pre-pandemic levels, there's a higher level of transit utilization, you know, we will continue our conversations with VTA about that, but we also recognize VTA from the standpoint that it's not just one location that, you know, manages the parking capacity for, for the entire system. There is capacity at Snell. There is capacity at Santa Teresa. We would retain a certain amount of capacity at Cottle as well, you know, up to about 130, 140 spaces could be retained at that location as well.
Thanks. And then a quick follow-up on that. Do we have any sense from VTA of the timeline for them developing that site and potentially moving the on-ramp and the other things they've envisioned?
Very long-term is their perspective. My conversations with them and with our Planning Director and Economic Development Director, it is probably a long-term future development. The good news is, is the deed that they have on the property with Caltrans requires movement of the on-ramp only with a permanent development. This interim proposal that we have tonight would not trigger the movement of the on-ramp, which is a good thing because the cost of that would be prohibitive.
Right. Okay. And then just two other things I want to touch on quickly, and then I'll yield to my colleagues here. So one is this, and this is maybe more for Omar, but the neighborhood preference concept is something that makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, I've, as you all have heard many times, I feel very strongly that neighborhoods that are part of the solution should see immediate visible benefits. The neighborhood should be better off. It should really be a win-win. And I know that that's included as something to basically explore and come back. And I'm curious, how much more exploration do we need and what, what evaluation needs to be undertaken to actually implement a neighborhood preference policy? I know we're doing a preference in terms of outreach, but is that, are you anticipating that we would do any more than what we're currently doing?
Yeah. So just to sort of clarify what, what exists, the Housing Department, Reagan's right here, so she could speak to this, but has a preference such that sites like the Blossom Hill Cloverleaf area that we know well would be included in the current preference without additional study, et cetera. So there, there are spaces. It's intentionally flexible, and Reagan could maybe lay that out a little bit more, but so there, this isn't a call to do more study on that preference. It, it exists currently.
So it's simply reinforced, okay, so I misunderstood. Simply reinforcing current practice?
That's right.
Okay. And do we have thoughts on how we could be more effective, or maybe the word is aggressive with the neighborhood preference, of actually helping encampments in the vicinity of a site move together onto a site? I mean, what have we learned from doing that local outreach?
I, I think we see many people who are experiencing homelessness and they live together in a community outside. They support each other. They take care of each other and oftentimes want to or express a desire to move together as a community into an EIH. We saw a significant community living at Felipe, an encampment on Felipe, move in together to the Felipe BHC. I would say what could be helpful in terms of doing more of that and being more proactive is the street outreach resources. Our street outreach teams are very limited and we're certainly not resourced in terms of having enough outreach teams to meet the number of people who are living outside in San Jose and to have proactive outreach to them and build the trust and relationships that it takes to bring someone inside.
And Councilmember, just to really put a fine point on that for the, your colleagues and the public, the, the notion of having the proactive case management style outreach that's trauma-informed, et cetera, that's in the service enhancement recommendation, it adds capacity to be able to get out to people proactively and work with them. So that's a distinction from calling a phone number or something and having people, trying to get people to run out. So it's a, it's a much more relationship-oriented approach.
Right. So that's probably more what I was thinking of. I mean, you're, what you are recommending is that we explore being much more robust in our implementation of the neighborhood preference essentially, but that is a bit in conflict with the concept of, of sub-populations. And so I'm just curious about that tension as we move forward. I understand we're going to have a follow-up conversation about that, but can you just say a little more on that?
Yeah, I think we, we just touched on it in our presentation.
Yeah.
That a neighborhood preference, we have a lot of flexibility right now in terms of our referrals to our interim housing communities where we can take an entire encampment together and bring them inside. If, if the city wanted to implement specific sub-populations at our interim housing sites, so for example, taking an, an interim housing location and serving victims of gender-based violence, or another alternative is serving individuals who are in our rapid rehousing program, that, well, you could better serve the people, those sub-populations by designing very specific programs for them. It could potentially limit the flexibility that we have now with a geographic preference.
Right. And I guess I'm just looking to understand what, when, when you all come back with, in the new year, what we should expect from that analysis? How are you weighing those two, or what are you considering there?
Yeah, so we're currently working with the San Francisco Foundation and a consultancy firm homebase on a study of our interim housing communities. Right now, the consultant is recommending consideration of serving sub-populations, but I think a couple of things, we could do it in a phased approach. And also, we could still reserve an entire interim housing community or perhaps more than one that could serve people who are impacted by encampment abatements. So I think there's a, a way where we could try and serve specific populations in a, in a more trauma-informed way, but also try and maintain some flexibility for the community. Another example is at a site, you could reserve a certain number of beds that are for people in the immediate adjacent area, that neighborhood preference, and then perhaps
Yeah.
another portion is for victims of gender-based violence, for example.
Right. So just going back to Cottle for a moment then, and then I'll ask my, I'll make my final point and move on. Sorry. Do we know how many folks are currently encamped within that 10-minute walk shed, let's say, of the Cottle site, who if there was a, if we were to pursue our neighborhood preference in a more robust way, might actually no longer be unhoused in the, in the vicinity of the site?
So I think, I need to tease something out because there's sort of two, two questions embedded there. The, the enhanced service, the sort of proactive outreach that the neighborhood service enhancements refer to, that's the sort of smaller walk shed, 10 minutes. The neighborhood preference is already larger than that, so it, it picks up not just that walk shed, but flexibly based on the neighborhood, and in this case, including, you know, the Cloverleaf, which is about a mile away, and a few other locations that are a little further away. So just to make sure we distinguish that, this, the current neighborhood preference would enable housing to be able to go to that broader location. I think the, the answer to the number question is that we don't have great information. We know that there's one off-again, on-again encampment within the, the walk shed. That's just, it's the nature of this dynamic sometimes that people are some places now and another place, another day, but it does reach some of those other locations.
I see. Okay. And then finally, I just wanted to end on this, and I really want to hear from my colleagues, but I, you know, I wanted to voice my support for exploring everything in the mayor's memo, including the no encampment zone. And I understand that's a contentious position, but I think it's worth better exploring and understanding how it could be implemented in a, in a responsible, humane way. The cost of ongoing enforcement, obviously, there are a lot of considerations and we're in no position to make a decision on that tonight, but the reason I feel strongly that it's worth exploring is that frankly, I think we have a marketing problem. We have, we have seen that these sites can be very effective at helping people move off the streets, get the support that they need, successfully help them transition into permanent housing, get back on their own two feet, can actually reduce service calls in the neighborhood. There's a lot there to, to celebrate, and yet, most residents don't, don't actually believe that these, you know, at least have a really strong fear that this site is bringing a problem to their neighborhood. And, and my greatest fear is that somebody walks by one of these sites, sees an encampment next to it and says, wow, this, this is a failed approach. This strategy is failing. The city is failing to solve the problem. We, we should not support any more of these sites. And I just, I, I think that we have to meet the community halfway and make, in my view at least, make some guarantees that we're going to take the steps necessary to ensure that their neighborhood is, is better off. I also think it's likely better for the residents of the EIH site to, to also have that buffer around the site as they go through their kind of personal journeys to, to permanent housing. So that's just my two cents on it. I'm curious to hear my colleagues' thoughts, but I certainly think it's worth exploring, understanding the trade-offs and the, and the understanding the trade-offs and the, and the potential costs. With, with that, I'll, I'll wait to hear my colleagues' comments before offering a motion or hear what motions they may have.
Sorry, Councilmember, one clarifying question about the notion, obviously, staff's recommendation was what it was, but, but so that we're clear, the, the notion of a, of an encampment is, it has a lot of, it means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And so when you ask about a no encampment zone, are you asking about people, tents, structures, cars and RVs, basically, any, it's, it's a, it's one of those-
My view just, I mean, I appreciate, and I look, I think this is why it needs further conversation and clarification. At the most basic level, a neighbor walking by a new EIH site that we have placed in their neighborhood ought to be able to walk some distance, whether that's five minutes. I don't know what the right distance is. I don't, it's, maybe it's not a radius. I think you all have made a very compelling case that it's a walk shed. It's not a strict radius, you know, that we draw with a protractor on a sheet of paper, on a map, fine, but should not, I, I think that we should couple a strong neighborhood preference with robust outreach as the sites are being implemented to make every possible effort to get the people in that neighborhood indoors in a safe, managed environment and then enforce within a similar distance, a, a no encampment zone. And by encampments, I, I think what most of the public is really focused on is people living outside in tents. And I think that that's a trade-off, that we give people a safe indoor place to go, but then say in exchange, in that similar radius, we're going to make sure that that area is clear of encampments. And I think that that's something that would build buy-in. People would say, wow. I, I just went through this at Bram and Monterey, by the way, which is no longer in my district. The way that we got some buy-in from neighbors for moving forward that site was saying, we have an unmanaged encampment with fires and noise and some real challenges, but hey, if we embrace this site, we can house those people and you won't have the noise and the fires and the challenges. And I get the enhanced services is a great step and it may work. It's harder to explain to the community. It's not a guarantee. And I, and I just think that we have a real marketing challenge here. And I think if we were bolder about our commitment into what we're going to do to make sure that these neighborhoods are better off, I think we'll get more buy-in and it'll be easier for us to scale up the solution. But again, I'm, I'm just suggesting that we further explore it and come back next year to really understand the pros and cons.
Okay. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. First, I want to thank staff, Omar, Jim, James, Reagan, for, or James, John at the end, sorry, can't see you, for your presentation. And, and John in particular, thank you for sharing that video. Was it Chris? His words were such a message of hope. And, and for those who are lighting an advent wreath this week, the first candle is hope. And that is what we should be talking about is the hope for housing the unhoused and getting them off of these, out of these encampments and into the emergency interim housing. So I really appreciate your presentation and the thoughtfulness and the detail behind it. I also appreciate all the memos that are going around from my council colleagues and I'll see where the memo, the motion's going to be made because I'm not, I don't have a memo, I don't have anything out there, so I'm not going to make a memo or a motion. And I also appreciate all the members of the community who are here, who are talking about their particular areas, their neighborhoods. I'm happy to support Councilmember Cohen removing Noble Site. That's absolutely the right thing to do. I'm also mindful of the fact that District Nine is not represented in these EIHs. And I know that staff, Omar and Jim and others are looking at sites in District Nine, but we haven't narrowed it down yet and we're, we're not really ready to talk about anything specifically, but every district must share the burden of an EIH and, and it's not a burden, it's really lifting up the unhoused and putting them in housing, which is the first step to putting them into affordable housing. In District Nine, we do have our share of affordable housing coming in about, in, in very many areas around Blossom Hill Road, et cetera, of upwards of about, of about 3,000 units tentatively coming in, but that's not the interim housing that we need. We need the emergency housing first and then the affordable housing comes next. Plus, affordable housing takes a lot longer to build. So I'm completely supportive of the building the 1,000 units and we're close and we need to focus on that. And I hope that we'll be able to come back with a project in District Nine and that we'll be able to have thoughtful communication and outreach with the community when that is an opportunity for us to have. So for now, I will, I am really grateful, this is something we absolutely need to do. We have an unhoused population that we need to take care of. Regardless of the reason that they are unhoused, we need to get them out of the creeks, we need to make them safe, we need to make our community safe. We need to lift them up, but we also need to improve the housed residents' neighborhoods as well. And the EIHs will accomplish both. So I think all of the memos are thoughtful. The staff presentation was very thoughtful and helpful and very detailed. So I really am grateful for all of that and I look forward to the motion and hopefully being able to support it and then having a future discussion about these sites. And then in, as they're called, quick build, I hope quick build is a quick build and not two years down the line, we're still talking about the quick build's not being built. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Menace?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all the work. Appreciate it. And thank you to all the community members that showed up today, whether you're in support of it or EIHs, whether you're against it. I think it's important that you all show up and express your opinion. That's what we do here at the city and that's what democracy is all about. So I very much appreciate your presence. You know, I did submit a memo. The memo, essentially what it did was highlight some of the work that District Two or South San Jose has been doing for some time. And I paused there a moment because there was a community member that told me, it's South San Jose, we don't see the lines. I don't care whose district it is, right? And so that really brought me to acknowledge the fact that that's how it's viewed by residents. And so from this point forward, I'm going to try to acknowledge it in that way and just South San Jose. And so there was certainly some, some compelling slides that were shown by some of the folks that popped in to, to talk a little bit about their concerns. And really, the spirit of the memo really is the dispersion of the sites of EIHs. It wasn't, my intent wasn't to kill sites. The memo was really to continue different, looking at different sites and it was essentially suggesting to pause the, the consideration of Cottle and 85 and Great Oaks while we explored other locations, continue to explore other locations. As Jim, you, you had mentioned, the, the 85 Santa Teresa sort of on-ramp there, South Bay on-ramp. I know there's challenges there and I'll have some, a question or two about that, just to better understand what you shared earlier. And really, it was also, the memo was also just to show that the, this South San Jose has really been leading the way as it relates to the development of a lot of these sites. I know that Bram and Monterey is going to be coming online in the next, when is it? Maybe then over the next 12 months, hopefully, or I'm not sure what the timeline is. You don't need to tell me. I can look it up. I just don't have it off the top of my head. In addition to that, I know that we're expanding the Roof Ferrari site and I don't, I don't recall exactly how many beds we're going to be growing to there. Jim, if you know it off the top of your head.
About 100.
Okay, so about 100. Okay. And then obviously, some of these that we're considering is, is obviously top of mind for many of the folks, considering some of the other things that we're doing. And let me just say also that I, very publicly, in case, and some of the folks in the audience, especially the ones holding up the signs, they know that I don't agree with them on just not moving forward on any site. And so I would say that it's important to acknowledge that building these sites is the right thing to do. But I also think it's important to acknowledge that although some folks aren't going to support any of those locations, right? And I don't kid myself and I don't think we should kid ourselves as a city, that some folks, community members, irrespective of where we put this, what services are offered, they're just not going to like it. And I think that's, that's the true sort of feeling and sentiment that I think exists in, in some parts of the community. But I also think that there's some folks, and I would put myself in this category, that, that are supportive of EIHs, but have concerns about the concentration in South San Jose as an example. And that was really another part of the memo that I was trying to, to highlight. And in fact, next week, for all of you that care about this, there's an item on the agenda, 8.2, and I'm mentioning this because I think it's in line with some of the things that we're thinking about as it relates to dispersion and concentration. It's the affordable housing siting policy that's going to be discussed next week. And it's simply a policy to make certain that we don't over-concentrate affordable housing in other, in only one district or one part of the city. And I think that there are some threads of that conversation, I think, in my mind, that, that sort of apply to this discussion and I look forward to having that conversation. But I just wanted to express that as well. And, and the other thing I would say that is, for all the folks here that may feel that whatever comes, pops out of the hopper tonight, if you will, as it relates to the decision from us, that I encourage you, I really, really encourage you to, to expend the energy that you have, the interest that you have on this topic, to help find sites across the city. I don't think it was said earlier, but I know it's in the memo, but the Cottle site actually came about through, through a recommendation from a community member. And so I don't know who that was. I know some people were asking me, well, who was that? I have no idea who that was. But, but I think that's important to acknowledge, right? So if you are here and you think other districts, other parts of the city should be doing their part, that I encourage you to, to, to use that energy to go find those locations, to make those recommendations to staff, to me, to every council member that's up here, because I am equally frustrated with the lack of sort of the spread of some of these locations. I think every district needs to be doing their part and I think only that way are we really truly going to put a significant dent in, in solving this, this issue. And so I just wanted to express that. So I encourage you to stay engaged. Jim, with regards to the Santa Teresa 85 on-ramp, and so there's obviously work to be done still, right? Assuming we, we want to go that route. In the memo, in your, the staff memo, I think it says, I forget the exact word it uses, but it says in, you're sort of continuing to sort of poke around on that site to figure out if it's viable. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know, it, it may not be viable or it may end up, it may end up being a very, very small site in terms of the number of units.
Right.
We would need an exception from Caltrans related to their on-ramp clearance and setback policy.
Right, right.
And that's not something they take lightly.
So, so if you don't mind me asking then, because one of the things that stood out to me, because I read the memo obviously, but why wouldn't we just, you know, because there were some, some sites in the, in one of the attachments that quite literally had a line through them saying, no more, not going to consider, this is a no-go. This wasn't one of those sites, I don't think.
It was not one of them.
Yeah. And so why is that if it seems so sort of long shot, if you will?
Yeah. The reason why is we, we believe we could develop a very small EIH community.
I understand.
We could stay clear of the setback zone. We could do the necessary grading and create the retaining walls and just end up with a small EIH community, maybe about 40 units. And the question is, with the limited amount of funding we have to develop as many units as we can to try and address the unsheltered population-
Correct.
-investing a, you know, a somewhat similar amount of money in 85 Santa Teresa to get 40 units compared to another location where we could get 100 units, it's just, the math doesn't work there for us.
Okay.
And that's why we wouldn't recommend that.
All right. And then the location of 85 and Great Oaks, how long, remind me, I forget exactly what you responded to, to Councilmember Mahan, as it relates to the timeframe you think is needed in order to figure out how that's going to sort of-
Yeah, I'll know a lot more tomorrow. I meet with ES Volta, the company that is developing the project that would take 25 feet away from that site on the south side to see, you know, what is, you know, what are their construction plans look like? What is their schedule? Could we go before them? Is that even possible at all? So those are some of the questions that we'll be discussing tomorrow. Regardless of those conversations with ES Volta or with Caltrans, the Cottle site, given its, its dimensions and its, the way it's kind of laid out, we think it is a, a better site.
Right.
It meets more of the, the preferred things that we're seeking in a site, but we recognize, you know, there's opposition in different places. I, I would tell you this, if Santa Teresa 85 became our recommended site, I bet we would have a considerable number of the community out in opposition to that.
Is it, is it, do you have a sense as to some of the meetings you've been, you know, you've been in attendance and presented, you know, at and such, what the sentiment is of the community members that you interacted with as it relates to which, well, maybe Cottle just came on sort of the horizon, right? But I was going to ask you, which you think they would prefer based on what you've heard?
I think they would prefer the one that is furthest from where they live.
Right.
That's been my experience doing this for many years.
Right, right. And you're correct, correct, correct. And that, and that's important to note. The one thing I would point out about, about the Great Oaks 85 site is that it is quite literally almost across the street from the Brunel site. Not, not exactly, but if you go across the tracks and right across Monterey and then go walk up about a block or two, if that, then the other one's-
You could characterize it that way. You could also characterize it that there's a, a major roadway, train tracks, a lot of-
There's enough division there.
They aren't quite in the same neighborhood, I would say.
Okay. And then the, the other thing I was going to ask is, let's just say that everyone here that is not supportive of the Cottle site went out tomorrow and started looking for sites and a site was floated to you all and, and it seemed promising. Would you, would you, would, I mean, you would be open to exploring that and jumping on that, assuming it fit whatever, you know, the criteria that we've established we want to use?
So I'd say two things to that. One is, as part of the process back in June, when the memo was floated to do deep community outreach, we actually had, had to put our foot on the gas to stand up a website and a site form and all that sort of thing. Where we are in time, I think there's a little bit of a window that would be needed because of staff, resources and timing to be able to, to spin up on, on other sites. So we'd have to take a look at it. I think that's probably-
And I guess I'd just add this. I know we're, you've preferred not to talk about council district boundaries, but I'd really need to hear that from the whole council. Are we talking District 10 or are we talking finding another site? It would take the time that Omar's talking about, but in District 10, I think we've, we've really beat the bushes pretty hard to find a location.
Yeah. I, I mean, I was trying to stay away from talking about the boundaries.
And I understand that, but the council has established that.
But they're real, right? Yeah, they exist. But of course, I, I think that one of my frustrations has been, and, and you know, folks up here have heard me say it, is, is that many of the projects that have been proposed have, well, one, either been in District Two or on the border of District Two. And so, and so, and I think that's part of the sentiment that's sort of carrying forward some of the discontent that exists, right? Right or wrong? I mean, that's just the reality.
Yeah, very much understood. Appreciate that point.
But, but that's why I'm trying to get away from that, because I, I think to a certain extent, we just need to see it as the South, South San Jose. And so anyway, I don't have a clear path forward on that, so I'll put that on the shelf and I'm going to ask some questions related to some of the other memos.
I will just say, sorry, Councilmember, so that you know, the, the mayor council already gave the direction to consider all 10 sites. So, so we do have a work to do to be able to resource evaluating a bunch of sites all around. So I just want to be clear, we just, it might take a while to be able to do it, but, but we have that.
Okay. That actually is a good question, because one of the things I was thinking about, obviously, the front and center in this conversation are sites in D4 and sites in D10, right? That's, but sites in other districts, say D8, say D9, say other places, is that on pause? Is that on the shelf? Do you need to be resourced in order to sort of kick that, kickstart that again or where is that?
I would say the direction we got from council was to focus in on potential alternatives in District Four and District 10, because we had sites that maybe weren't ideal or preferred for a variety of reasons. So we certainly prioritize in that area, but we were open to receiving suggestions in, in other districts. And as we move forward and make progress towards quick build, which we've also heard, we are open to considering those other sites in District Nine, District Eight, District Five, District One.
Yeah. And just so you know, the frustration for me as a council member from District Two, I feel like short of me driving around other districts trying to find sites, I know this, I know the city well, but I don't have the time to go drive around other districts trying to find sites. It's, that's fine, we'll do that. But, but my hope is that every council member is sort of taking it upon themselves to-
And in the end, if we were, if a site was suggested to us that seemed very clear, that it would be feasible and viable, I don't think we're going to look away from something. I don't know that we can stand up a, a significant process like Omar talked about with the resources. I don't know that we can stand up a significant process like Omar talked about with the resources, but if somebody comes in with a really good site and we can see the benefits of it right away, you know, that could probably be in the mix.
Okay, all right.
Including working with the council office, wherever that site has to be, the community members who are in that area, it would be the same level of deep community engagement to make sure that folks are all engaged.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I just had a few questions about the mayor's memo. So, and I apologize if I missed it, and the memo came out a little late, you know, given that it's blue, but so...
Should be a different color?
No, no, no. Well, that's how we recognize everyone, you know, a memo that comes out shortly before the meeting. And so what I was...
It was out this morning.
What I was curious about is, there's some changes that the mayor is recommending. I think he's going from, I had it written down somewhere, from to half, to five minutes walk shed instead of the 10 minutes, I think, in the quarter mile instead of a half mile. I think, I don't know if I have that correct. I think it's item 2A on his. And so obviously, there's a cost associated with that, and I'm wondering if we've done back-of-the-envelope sort of costs, as how that compares to some of the costs that you enumerated in some of the slides. Are we talking about more money, less money doing that? I mean...
We haven't done that analysis. The only place we really looked at a no encampment zone was that 150-foot setback. But the way I read the memo, Man, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is really it's to do this analysis and bring it forward in the budget process, which sounds like an MBA to me.
That's right. What I really want to do is present the council with some options here. And I know staff has really dug in on this and looked at a lot of different issues here. I think we're going to learn some things probably through this study that's coming back from home base. And what I hope we're going to learn, some of the things we're going to learn is maybe how we can transition from a security-focused model to a stewardship-focused model, and perhaps with engaging the residents themselves.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand, so if we were simply saying, "Do an MBA and go do this work," I get the sense in reading this that we're almost like, if we, let's just say we approve this, this was added to the recommendation, that you would go out and do this work, get the cost estimates, and then we would move forward? I mean, I'm trying to think about sort of the decision-making processes really, because you may come back with some numbers and we may say no, and I guess obviously there's a process for including MBAs into the budget and things of that nature.
Could I maybe speak to what the intent is?
Please, please.
Yeah, you know, we're not going to get these built in time for the budget process. So the next council, I won't be on it, will make the decision about how to allocate resources to best accomplish the goals I think that we probably all share. What I want to do is provide some transparency around our options to that council and to the public, and the council will make the decision.
Okay, and then, Mayor, just another question about the memo, item 2D.
Yeah.
Trying to understand that, it says, "Consider re-examining expenditures for those staff that either cannot provide visible outcome improvements or present challenges."
Yeah, let me get, I think it's on page, gosh, it's the very end of the memo, is it 26? Yeah, it's got a list of all the expenditures that are involved in the $2.5 million roughly. And I, again, I don't know the level of depth that staff has looked at this, I'm sure they've thought about a lot harder than I have. But I think about, for example, hiring community liaisons, and I think, is that really going to move the needle in terms of the concerns that neighbors are going to have? Or on the other hand, for example, could we imagine paying a resident of one of the communities, a formerly unhoused individual, who could themselves get paid and go to neighborhood meetings and communicate with the public in some way? And that could provide both job opportunities and perhaps a lower-cost model as well, and provide some work history and so forth. So what I'm thinking about is, how do we shave some of these costs in some ways that can make this a little more fiscally sustainable? Obviously, I understand there's a lot of analysis and thought that needs to go into this, and I'm guessing maybe the effort at home base will help.
Yeah, one just clarifying point about that liaison, so that we have a good sense that there's a, like an order of magnitude of difference between maybe having somebody with modest skills go to a community meeting on a one-off basis and respond to, and I think from a liaison perspective, the 11 members, the elected bodies that have questions as it relates to these enhanced neighborhood services, the connection of neighborhood groups that have these questions. What happens now is that ends up being handled by our staff, who are also responsible for doing the actual work of cleaning and that sort of thing. And so I just want to make sure we understand that we're talking about a pretty deep level of commitment in those roles and an ability to navigate a lot of different directions so that we are not compromised on the execution of these things, of, in this case, neighborhood service enhancements. So just so that we know what that part is. John, do you have anything you need to add to that?
No, I don't. Well, I appreciate your, that was the one item that was a little unclear to me, so I appreciate your clarification.
Do you mind if I add?
Sure, at some point I'd like to.
Really quickly, I think this goes back to building trust with the community, sharing the outcomes of service enhancements, looking at data, sharing, you know, since an EIH came on, or since service enhancements are on board, showing the difference that it's made. So it would be about reporting back and doing a lot of the work that we already do with neighborhood associations, but stepping it up and serving citizens advisory groups and others that are coming up and popping up around these EIHSs.
Yeah, let me just conclude, and then I'll just ask one more question, is just, yeah, my concern in reading it was just simply that maybe, you know, examining sort of how someone's doing their job and then maybe docking their pay or something, if they're not producing a particular outcome. And that was, you know, I was trying to wrap my head around that, but I appreciate you...
Yeah, no, it wasn't that, it was looking at, is this exactly the staff we'd want to have the biggest, the best impact in reducing quality of life concerns in a neighborhood? And I'm still not very convinced yet about the whole liaison issue, I know we can talk about it another time. Also, there's a lot of money spent, for example, on vehicle abatement staff, and frankly, we have some process issues that are still being worked out.
Correct.
And it's not obvious to me that by hiring more staff, we get more effective vehicle abatement yet.
Okay, yeah, and I agree with some, yeah, and I, the parts of the memo that are very clear to me, I agree with, you know, consider employing formerly unhoused residents living in interim houses. Those seem like logical things to me, and, but I think the cost is going to be a big component in my mind as it relates to how we incorporate this. The last thing I would just say, Jim, back to what I, let me take it off the shelf, the process going forward then for the Cottle site and the 85 site, and so can you share with me your understanding then? So you're strictly going to move forward with the, sort of the timing of this, right? And how the community is to understand sort of how we as a city are going to move forward?
We would be doing three things as simultaneously as we could. Number one, Cottle, we think, is the recommended and the, right, today with the information I have, the best site. So we would move forward with VTA to negotiate that license agreement and to, you know, prepare that site for future development as an EIH. Simultaneously, we would be meeting with ES Volta related to the 85 Great Oaks site and Caltrans, because we have both of those entities on each side to kind of understand, make sure we understand the clear zones, and then the ES Volta project. Could we, can we coexist? Can we truly build these projects kind of simultaneously next to each other and have it be an effective project? And then the third thing would be, at 85 and San Teresa Boulevard, would Caltrans approve an exception to their clear zone policy and let us build this community with the emergency fire lane in their clear zone?
Okay.
So those are the three.
Just so I understand about that site, if they allow us to build in their clear zone, that would still only get us about 60 units or so?
That's right, up to 60 units.
And there's no way that we can...
Go from 40 to about 60.
And you don't think there's a way to engineer it or design it in such a way to give us net more?
I do not, Councilmember. This is one where I triple-checked it again, I pressed our public work staff many times to see the maximum number of units we could get, and I've walked it with them, and I'm pretty convinced that's our upper limit.
Okay, all right. I maybe have other questions, but I'll wait to hear some of the other comments.
Jeffrey, you wanted to jump in?
Yeah. Councilmember Jimenez, just to put another point on recommendation 2D from the mayor's memo, how I'm interpreting as city manager is that we're being asked to sharpen our pencil on the expenditures and making sure that we're getting the highest, best use out of them. And for example, in our vehicle abatement program, we're in the process of reimagining that program and the whole service delivery of that program, which may or may not result in need for new positions related to that. So that's how I'm interpreting it, and so that's how we would approach it if that was acceptable to the council, if that got approved.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, and just for the record, I mean, all the expenditures are listed, and I appreciate staff being so transparent about how they put this budget together, it's not easy, and so anyone could always pick on any one light item. But in this case, it was $365,000 for community engagement liaisons. I'm guessing this council next spring, or the next council, I should say, is going to be challenged with this next budget. You know, California's saying they got a $25 billion deficit, it's probably going to be twice that, and we know one thing about every state budget that's in deficit, it makes the state grab money from local governments. And so we're all going to be doing anything we can to just look for savings. So I just wanted to at least put it on the table for discussion. I appreciate all the comments and the good discussion, all my colleagues. I really want to thank several folks, in addition to all the people I thanked in the box, I want to thank Mackenzie Mossing on our team, and Nathan Hope previously on our team, but they've been really passionate about pushing forward in this effort. I know Mackenzie's put plenty of, plenty of weekends, long nights, and working on different aspects of this, and appreciate Omar, your collaboration with Mackenzie and everybody in our team, and pushing forward, and Jim, and everybody. Also, I want to thank, I know I see James Stagie and Matt Kano and others sitting above us here, who have been working hard on all these. I want to thank the team from VTA, in particular Ron Goleman and Karen Gannott and Gary Graves for their willingness to step up, their transit agency, they don't have to help us solve the homeless crisis. They're doing it because they think it's the right thing to do. And, you know, frankly, there's a lot of other agencies that can be stepping up like they are, and they're not. So thank you to VTA. And I really want to thank Jim Orpall for coming out of retirement to do this. This isn't easy, and, you know, I know, I remember the earliest conversations that started with Dave Sykes and you, Jim, I think it was probably March of 2020, right, as the pandemic was hitting, as we were talking about. Okay, we have a little bit of money, how fast can we build a lot of housing to try to get a lot of people out of shelters and into individual units? And, you know, I think Jim and the entire team just hit a home run in the first three projects, they were really hard, but folks moved fast and got a lot done, and a lot of hundreds, more than 700 of our residents have had a chance to get back on their feet as a result, and I just think that's fantastic. So I want to thank everybody for the hard work. I want to just ask a couple quick questions. One is about, there's a lot of issues about the park-and-ride utilization at this site at Cottle, and I know a little bit about this since I'm a VTA board member, and I know we wish that all these park-and-ride lots were really full, so we'd have full light rail cars. But in fact, we have the lowest, I think the very lowest fare box return on light rail of any system in the United States outside of Orlando, I think, because Walt Disney operates this system for free. So we are mightily challenged for ridership. I just want to check in, based on your conversations, Omar, Jim, with the team at VTA, how they felt about the utilization of this lot, and the fact that they are going to continue to use some portion of it, I believe they're just giving us a corner of it, is that right?
Yes, Mayor, you know, in talking with VTA, they feel like a number of their park-and-ride lots along that part of the light rail system are underutilized, and they are willing to work with us on this one. I think if we were asking them for three sites, and we're going to take up all their capacity in the area, I think it would be a different conversation. They are further looking into their records, and I think one aspect of it is, they feel like it's being used for non-transit purposes as well. And, you know, I think there's a big employer and facility kind of right next to it, and, you know, maybe we need to think about how do we maybe not have that used for that purpose and have that parking happen elsewhere. But we'll definitely have those conversations with VTA about how do we ensure that light rail usage is still, you know, not impacted by this as best we can. I think that's something that we definitely need to focus on with them. It's important for us for a lot of reasons as well.
Sure.
I think we're dealing with just a unsheltered crisis that's kind of epidemic proportions, and that's why I think we're willing to make some of these trade-offs.
Yep, yeah, agreed. Okay, thank you. And then finally, that slide you put up last time, the slide number three, if we could just take one last look at it around the distribution of units in the city, I just, you know, we presented it once, and then we heard a lot of public testimony about how South San Jose is overly burdened. I just want to make certain we're really clear. Could we put up that slide again?
Yeah, if we can, we'll get it back up, and then also, while they're pulling it up, page 19 of the memo, there we go.
Yeah, page 19 of the memo describes it by district, is that right? Yeah, and it's not a close call, I just want to assure everybody, we've got a lot more of these to build, and we're going to build them in lots of parts of the city, but I can assure you, for the most part, the overwhelming concentration of units that we're providing one way or another, whether it's shelter or housing, is somewhere between council members, Davis, Sparza's, and process districts up in central San Jose, and clearly the data bears that out. I know that there's lots of concern about, whenever we talk about things like no encampment zones, and we can certainly call them something else, and there are variations that I know that we can consider, and I understand staff has considered this very deeply. But I would associate myself with the comments of Councilmember Mahan, which is, our goal is to build as fast and nimbly as possible, as many units as we possibly can, to get as many human beings off the street into safe, dignified housing. I think we all agree on that basic premise. And we can only, and we're already seeing the challenges, we've experienced this in every public meeting we've had. I think Jim Orpall put it exactly right. What every resident in this city prefers is that this get built as far away from them as possible. And we've got to do something to enable us to be able to build in every district, in every community. And so if we can only move at the speed of trust, and we need to show neighborhoods that we're committed, the one thing that will undermine our progress is when we come to a meeting like this and somebody shows a photograph that goes viral that shows one of our housing communities that's built, and literally 50 feet away are two tents. A neighborhood is going to say, why are we bearing the responsibility for housing our unhoused neighbors? At the same time, our other neighborhoods are not bearing that responsibility, and we're bearing the responsibility for housing their unhoused neighbors on our streets on top of that. We have to be able to demonstrate that there is community benefit in the communities immediately. And I think that's important, and I think we can do it without criminalizing homelessness, I think we can do it without it being punitive, I think we can do it if in fact we have a model, and I'm still also not convinced, it always involves the police, by the way, but we can talk more about that, I'm sure, in depth offline. I think there are ways we can do this that simply encourage folks to move along if they're within, say, a five-minute walk shed of an existing housing community where we're trying to house 150 or 200 people who have just come off the street. And yes, there are occasionally issues, we know, out in tents and encampments around drug use and other things, and I think we'd probably want those issues as far away from our housing communities as possible. And so I think there's reason for us to say, and this is not just us that's considering this, Oakland did this actually very effectively when they were moving communities into, although I would disagree with the means they use with the shed communities, I think we all recognize here that we want more dignified housing and better quality housing, but they kept people together as they were moving them from encampments, and then they created entire zones where there wouldn't be any encampments, because they didn't want to have those challenges, both for the residents that they're housing, as well as the housed residents in the neighborhoods around. So I just think we should at least ask the question and ask more questions, and what I'm proposing in this memorandum is just that we come back and allow the next council to be able to consider this within a radius, in this case of roughly 1,000 feet, I think that's probably a two-and-a-half-minute walk shed, I don't know exactly, but I'm guessing staff will come up with a better indicator, so that we can address what I think Councilmember Mahan has described as a basic marketing problem. Despite everybody's best efforts, and let's face it, we've seen what the data says, the data says, these make communities safer, not less safe. But nonetheless, we're going to have a real marketing problem to the extent that we see encampments and tents around the... to the extent that we see encampments and tents around the, the housing communities that we're building. So I think that will enable us to move faster in the long run, and I think it'll enable us to build a lot more units. And, and that's what I'm hoping we can accomplish. So I, I would appreciate consideration of my memorandum, I guess with Councilmember Mahan's as well. I'd also incorporate some of the concerns, I think, raised by Councilmember Jimenez. I would be willing to support a motion that would say essentially that we, as a council, are approving all three of those sites that were identified, obviously with primacy given, I'm sorry, I'm referring to the three sites in South San Jose, with primacy given to the Cottle site. But with staff having the discretion, if, for example, I know, Jim, you're meeting with this representative tomorrow. If ultimately, staff learns that through its investigation of that site, as well as the Cottle site, that, hey, there's a better way, and we should pivot, then staff should have the ability to do that and do that nimbly. And so I'd be happy to support something that says that. But we're recognizing that we are going full speed ahead unless there are some significant changes circumstances. So I would be quite happy to support a motion that did all those things. I know we have part of that motion on the floor. Councilmember Cohen, if you're willing to consider a friendly amendment.
I've been waiting for the question, so.
Okay.
I invited the question, what was it, 45 minutes ago?
Yeah, yeah. So I just gave you a very long-winded friendly amendment.
You know, I, look, this, this is to do a study and come back with an MBA, so I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I think it's a reasonable thing to study. Most of what you're asking for is, is reasonable things to investigate. I, I don't have any problem with investigating it. We, we've hashed out a couple of weeks ago concerns that I and others have about some of the ideas in there. That doesn't mean that we're implementing it. Just one quick question for staff. What we're saying here is a, what was it, what was the distance? 10-minute right now service enhancement. That would be the policy unless we at some MBA point change it. I guess if we approve the, we would approve that, and then we would say, let's study other options and see whether shortening it gives us more resources to be able to do additional things. I'm okay with that. I'll just, I'll just say my concern has always been that, you know, you, you know, obviously, I, there's a, there's a valuable goal here. We want people to, to see the benefit and, and feel, feel good about it. We also, I mean, I don't think there's a lot of evidence that in many of the places we even have the problem, but we ought to, you know, look into that. But if we, if we're saying, we, we want every neighborhood to say, I want, in order to fix this problem, you're going to have to build me a site. We're not going to have the resource to build a site everywhere. We're not going to be, you know, able to say that every district even has a viable site, even if we wanted one, or every neighborhood has a viable site. So I'm just concerned that in some interim period, what we're doing is saying the places that don't have viable sites and can't have them are where everyone's going to congregate, and we just cause a bigger problem. That's been my concern. But I'm happy to accept this as a friendly amendment now and study it, and then reconvene and discuss it further when it comes back. So.
Thank you.
Say yes.
Councilman Cohen, so I appreciate the friendly amendment acceptance of, is that okay with the secretary?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate you accepting the memorandum. And then with regard to the idea of empowering staff on the three sites.
Isn't that already in the, kind of in the memo? I mean, as far as I thought, it was, kind of says, if a better sites come along, you can implement, or is it, or do we need to specify that?
It does. It says pursue the Saroni and Cottle sites while continuing to pursue other identified sites. We would do that along the lines that I described to Councilwoman Jimenez. And I think once we conclude that, which one we're going with, we can inform the council through an info memo. We've done our final work on it, and then what came out of that process and where we're moving forward.
That's acceptable, you, Councilmember Jimenez? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, just, just to clarify this point, because it's going to impact how we actually do the, the homework on this issue of a no encampment. The Councilmember Mahan mentioned earlier the notion of like, the general public notion of, of a, of a no encampment being a reference to people in tents or structures. You know, attachment M in the memo includes an issue we had around six, you know, the, the, the moving of an oversized vehicle six different times over the course of a, a year or something. Because one of the challenges in terms of doing the homework that you're talking about is how to, if we're including things like that, there are ordinance issues. There are, there's just additional staff work that we have to think through internally. So I want to make sure what it is that we're, what we're being asked by the council, mayor council, to do.
Well, as I think about arguments that were made back in the spring, I want to say in May, when we were before the council, I can remember two speakers come to us saying, Ruff Ferrari isn't solving anything. Look at all these RVs that are parked out in front. So I guess what I'm saying is, I, I'd like to be able to say to whatever community that's getting one of these housing communities, you're not going to have both. Right? You're not going to have both a housing community and a substantial number of unhoused residents in the same space.
So that, fortunately, thanks to Olympia and Andrea, beautify, that area, Ruff Ferrari, all, all clear on that.
Yeah, and thank you, by the way, yeah.
And their staff and team.
Yes.
All, all clear. We went out there and, and made sure, there's a couple, there's two RVs that are neatly parked nearby, but that, that street that was jammed up. My, my point, though, is the important distinction is when we start talking about oversized vehicles, to go back to the RV parking memo earlier today, there are some Department of Transportation, San Jose PD, other issues around what's involved. So I just wanted to get that clarity so that when we huddle internally, we can, we can make sure to come back fully.
Okay, I'd be happy to talk more offline.
Okay.
Because it sounds like there's some, some issues in the weeds. Okay. All right, other comments or questions? Councilmember Cohen?
I did, just very briefly, while we're negotiating with VTA for the, on the Saroni site, and I think I mentioned this before, and this, this may or may not be possible. And I know VTA has thoughts about what they're doing in the long term. It's a big enough space that we don't necessarily have to limit ourselves to 100 units. So we ought to consider, you know, how much space we can get and what we should do with it, if we can get more out of it and make it more cost, you know, better bang for our buck, and also serve more people. I just wanted to bring that up. And even if that means potentially we can get the space to, to combine it with an RV parking right on the same site, because it really is land that, in theory, for now, could lend itself to a lot of service. Let's, let's consider that. I just wanted to bring that up before we finish the debate. And then just mention that it's important for everyone to keep in mind that the success of the site is that about 60% of the people within a year or less are moved on to other places and other housing. This isn't just serving 100 people. A 100-bed site serves up to 150 or more people per year. So this is a really valuable temporary housing site. And I just want to make sure that was part of this discussion to get that out there. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, I fully agree. All right, I think we got a motion. Oh, forgive me, Councilmember Sparza, I didn't see that.
Thank you. I have a question about the MBA that is coming back, so, to the future council. So the MBA is going to include the costs around the options around reducing the walk shed, the costs of options, including the no encampment zone within a similar radius, and the cost of the options of repurposing some or all onsite security costs for BHC. So a couple of comments. One, if we are going to include a, a pretty wide no encampment zone, will that MBA also come back and look at the other setbacks that we will have established in the city around schools and walkways to schools, daycare centers, and the like? Is that going to be included in this MBA?
Councilmember Sparza, John Sisrally, we don't have a direction to look at that at this point. The direction in front of us is, is to shrink the space and include the things that you talked about. So at this point, we're not looking at other setbacks in other areas, be that schools or any other sites.
Huge benefit, because right now, tonight, right now, we are talking about tiny homes, or, you know, BHCs, EIHs. And, and, and we're talking about setbacks, and a pretty wide one, right? What's in front of us is 1,000 feet from a tiny home site. And we're not looking at it in totality around other setbacks that are in the community that we will hear about and that do have costs. And I, I know this because my office gets all the calls, as I'm sure everyone else's does. And we have a setback around schools of 150 feet. So we're saying that our setback around schools is across the street. But for a tiny home site, we're saying that we will enforce a setback to, what, eight times that? So I think what will help the future council is really to see the costs of that and the options of that in totality. So that since we're talking about what the community is hearing from us, from the city, and, and the marketing problems that we may or may not have, I think the community would like to hear that we have thought through a matrix, if you will, of setbacks and the related costs and services associated to sensitive sites across the city. And so I'm just bringing that up because, you know, if we have a marketing problem or we don't, we're telling folks, hey, you know what? We're going to enforce this no encampment zone half a mile or a quarter of a mile from a tiny home site. But where we're going to let tents and encampments go across the street from your neighborhood school, I think that's an even bigger marketing problem. And the future council is going to have choices to make around those things and is going to need to know the costs related to that. The second thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, since we're talking about marketing problems, if we go to a community and we tell them, we're not going to provide security, or we're going to cut the cost of security for this site so that we can do trash pickup or whatever around the area, you know, I think, I, I think that's, I don't know if that's creating a new concern or alleviating a current one. And so I think, I, I understand exactly what the mayor's trying to do. And, and, and I agree, I think the future council is going to have to make some difficult financial decisions. But really, the future council is going to need to look at those options because security is something that I think residents are expecting. And by the way, residents that live in the tiny homes, as well as residents in the neighboring area. And so those are just my comments about that. I, you know, the direction today is around tiny homes. But as we look at these setbacks and the radius, and the radius, and the costs of no encampment zones, we really need to look at other sensitive areas that this council has already approved, such as schools and daycares. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza. I, I, I think and hope that the future councils will look at these, I think, as unique. There's going to be unique needs depending on which subpopulations we're serving, and perhaps how the, the, the communities are, are working in their surrounding environment. So I suspect security needs will vary as well as other issues. So in any event, I know that's, that's for, for further exploration as we, as we get more built. Okay. Any other comments?
I have a.
Yeah, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, you know, there, there was a discussion about, I think Kaiser employees are using the VTA park and ride lot. I, I think that's probably the case. But I think part, but, but I think, my wife works there. But part of the reason I think that happens, and she doesn't do that, but is, 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 is that, is that they don't have enough parking on their campus. And they're struggling with that. They're actually going to be rebuilding that hospital. And so I'm curious, and if, if anyone from the team, and I know this is additional work or phone call, and I can certainly reach out, but if anyone's reached out to Kaiser to see what type of impact it would have to essentially take that away, even though it's not, I know it's not theirs, right? And they're utilizing a space that belongs to VTA. But curious if that's been explored.
It, it hasn't. You know, it, it, so it hasn't, okay. All right, I'll, I'll reach out to someone, and then I'll, I'll let you know what they tell me. I mean, for what it's worth, I think that's, it's an important thing to consider. Thank you.
Councilmember Pross?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just had a, a question, because I, I had a concern about the item two from your memo. But I actually appreciate now that it's really just looking for an MBA. So it's kind of a more of a future-looking question as well. But what, what kind of challenges do we run into legally as we start to include more and more of these, you know, so-called no, no, or no, no encampment zones? Right? Essentially, everywhere in the city is, is more or less a no encampment zone today. But we have people camping in our parks, in our waterways, our streets, right? And we, we, we don't necessarily have, one, the resources to go out and, and, and enforce that as, as frequently as we may be interested in. And we have challenges with, with state laws. And we currently, right, challenges we were running into being delayed at Columbus Park. And, and, and so I'm just curious, what, what sort of legal challenges might that bring if we continue to add to this list of no, no encampment zones?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think that's a, this is Nora Freeman, City Attorney. I think that may be a question for me. And my office has been working with staff on the, the legal issues, and we will continue to do that. Case law continues to develop along those lines, and we've been in discussions. My office has reached out to Oakland, Los Angeles, some other cities on how they're managing some of those ideas and restrictions. And we will continue to do that with staff. There are legal issues, but they're not insurmountable at this point.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I recognize it's just a, an MBA, so this will be a discussion that the, the council will have next year. And considering that that's the request, I think if it was, if it was the other way around, if we were actually looking to accept that as a addition, additional requirement today, it's something I, I wouldn't be able to support, and I likely wouldn't support it through the MBA process next year. But, you know, I, I think that, you know, I, I can be comfortable accepting it now as, as just a direction on, on an MBA. I, I think we should be focusing the conversation not on, on, on where people cannot encamp. Because again, we essentially already have that rule throughout our entire city today. And we should be focused on where they can, because clearly, that's the more challenging one. And I wasn't planning on, on adding this addition. But I think considering we're, we're asking just for this MBA, I am going to ask that we also add additional language on the MBA that we, we, that staff resubmit an MBA on the analysis of sanctioned encampments. And that that also come back then to the, to the council next year during the budget process, kind of a re-update to that, that MBA. I think that truly should be the conversation that should be had. I think that's the, the one piece of the pie that we still have not endeavored down. And it's really the first rung of the ladder, as far as I see it, where we could attempt to, to achieve even better results if we, if we had that opportunity to, rather than just tell people where they can't be. And maybe while I'm chatting about this, staff, can you pull up the, the slides that you had? I think they were 19 and 20. That, that, they were labeled 19 and 20 on the slide. I don't know if they were actually 19 and 20. But essentially, where, I think it was John that, that stated, you know, here's, here's kind of what, what happens when we create a, a no encampment zone. Let me know when you, when you got that up.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think I'll accept that, because I think it's a good conversation for the next council to have. So I'd be happy to accept that amendment.
Trying to go to 19.
Yes, I accept.
I, I appreciate that, and, and appreciate that the council would just have an opportunity to, to, to talk about that next year, is, is again, another alternative. But just, I, I, I really, you know, I, I think this, like, yeah, thank you. That 19, and then you can swap to 20, essentially just demonstrating, right? It doesn't solve the problem, and we all know that. Right? Saying, hey, let's abate an encampment, or let's not allow an encampment here. I, I get the argument of, you know, that, that we're trying to create some sort of, you know, win for the immediate community or perception that, that, you know, we're solving the problem. But we know in reality we're not. We know in reality what we're doing is just moving it a little bit further away. And so that's why I think we're focused on the wrong conversation. If we're focused on, hey, let's continue to add to the list of places where people can't camp, or where we're going to add extra enforcement for people where they shouldn't camp. And instead, we should be continuing to talk about places where. camp, and instead we should be continuing to talk about places where, where they can. So I appreciate you including that in the motion I'll be able to, to support. Thanks.
Councilmember Pross, what's going to be great is that since neither of us are going to have any vote whatsoever in this matter, I look forward to having my two minutes with you when we're coming to, to implore the next council to do whatever it is we think they should do.
I'll join you. I'll join you.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, I think, did we get everybody? All right, I think it's all been said. Let's vote.
Jimenez.
Aye.
Corales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Esparza.
Yes.
Aranis.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, can I have a point of order? It is getting, you know, pretty late and we have some land use items that we definitely have to get through tonight. So I wanted to suggest that we defer items 8.4 and 8.5 to next week. And then have us work it out in, in rules tomorrow.
Okay, so the suggestion from the vice mayor is that we would hear 10.2, 10.3, and 10.4, is that right?
Yes.
Defer 8.4 and 8.5 for a week?
Yes, that's correct.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, that seems to be a motion and it seems to be a second. Are there any concerns with that, my colleagues? Okay.
I do have, I have some public speakers for 8.4.
Yeah, understood. We, we wouldn't take public testimony today. I think the point would be to hear the public testimony at the time we're deciding the matter.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm not hearing anybody raise their hand in objection or concern, so let's vote on the motion to defer 8.4 and 8.5.
Jimenez.
Aye.
Corales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Esparza.
Yes.
Aranis.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye. Okay, let's, could I ask everybody, please? I know a lot of folks would like to leave. We don't blame you. Please leave quietly because we need to continue with this meeting. So you can have lots of conversation outside the door after the door closes. Please don't have the conversation here. If you just quietly leave, we appreciate it.
Mayor, can I, may I just say something?
Yes.
I want to thank the transportation DOT staff and the planning department for sitting here for so long, and then we'll see you next week.
Yes, thank you for all your suffering. Oh, what we do to people. All right. Here we go. Item 10.2. We all need to hear down here. Thank you. Item 10.2 is special use permit and vesting tentative map and preservation permit for the property at 147 East Santa Clara Street, North Fourth Street, and East St. John Street. There is a presentation. Welcome, Robert and Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building, Code Enforcement. I'm joined by Robert Manford, and we also have other staff available by Zoom. The project before you is the Icon Echo Project. This is one of our three downtown projects that we're bringing before you tonight that have been moving through our process for some time. So just quickly, I'll go through the presentation relatively quickly. The project involves the demolition of an existing building roughly 20,000 feet, and then the construction of two buildings. The first, a 24-story building, which is 525,000 square feet of office space with 8,500 square feet of ground floor retail. And then the second building, which constitutes 27 stories of residential, 415 multifamily units. And the project does include construction hours on a Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So just a quick reminder that the property has both a downtown general plan designation and a DC downtown primary commercial zoning district. The project is consistent with both, as well as the downtown design guidelines and standards, and staff has followed council policy 6-30 in completing the project and moving it forward. The project prepared a draft environmental impact, sorry, a draft supplemental environmental impact report that was put out for a 45-day comment period. Less than significant impacts with mitigation included, included construction air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, hazards, and construction noise and vibration. Significant unavoidable impacts included cultural resources for historic and land use related to impacts to the St. James Square City Landmark District. So if approved, council will need to include the adoption of a statement of overriding The project did receive six comments on the supplemental EIR. A First Amendment with response to comments was posted back in October. None of the comments raised any issues that required recirculation of the supplemental And then, oh, excuse me. So lastly, if I can just get the clicker to work, staff is recommending approval of the project, which includes the adoption of a resolution certifying the supplemental EIR, approving, subject to conditions, the special use permit that includes the demolition of the existing building and the construction of the new buildings, adoption of a resolution approving the vesting tentative map, and then also the adoption of a resolution approving the historic preservation permit for the demolition of the three non-contributing buildings and the construction of the, the new tower, the new residential tower, the Echo Tower. And with that, staff is available for questions, and we have the whole team here now.
Okay, welcome, whole team, and thank you for your patience with our late meeting. All right, so we have five minutes for the applicant, but I should warn the applicant, you've got a favorable recommendation from the staff, so don't feel obligated to steal defeat from the jaws of victory. I didn't mean to say you shouldn't speak, I just wanted to encourage you. I know it's late, so hello, Josh, good to see you. Feel free to come on down and say hello.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. We will try to keep this brief. Josh Barrows here, COO at Urban Catalyst, and I have my partner Paul Ring with me and our project manager Peter Solak.
One, one thing, can we have Alex Sanino added to the?
Ah, yes.
To the screen.
He's on, he's on Zoom right now? Alex, yeah, Alex Sanino? Can you bring him aboard, Tony?
He's moving now. Okay, he's, he's in as a panelist. He can unmute at will.
Okay, so he's a panelist now?
Yes.
Okay. Alex, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. The button to share my screen is, if I could share my presentation.
You should be able to. Everybody has permission to share.
Gotcha. Here we go. Thank you.
It's been a long process for us getting to this night for a lot of different formats. We're excited.
Understood. I think I first heard about this project about a dozen years ago, so I'm glad to see it.
Well, we were so excited to present Icon and Echo to you today, this evening, and we hope it'll be one of the best examples of a transit-oriented development here in the city. It's been a labor of love assembling these block pieces that make up the project. My, my own personal experience goes back at the site, which is just across from City Hall, back to when I was two years old. My dad was actually the pastor at First Presbyterian Church there for over two decades. So I'd spend my youth all the way through college at church volunteering at the Town Park Towers senior apartments next door, and I really got to witness the city grow around us on a weekly basis. I look back now, typical Sunday, volunteer, and then go to what was formerly a McDonald's, which is now housing 1,000 students at the grad project. I'd go over to my mom's office, she used to run InVision Homeless Services, actually out of an old Victorian, this was right where this dais was, and now we have a beautiful city hall in that place. So whether it's Icon and Echo or the other projects going on in the city or new city halls, the city goes through new iterations, builds upon itself each year towards that dynamic downtown that we all envision. There are a ton of community benefits on this project. I just wanted to list a few that we're very excited about. A big one being the 3,000-plus residents and workers that would be at this project supporting our local small businesses and nonprofits, and also providing ridership to our biggest transit investment in the history of the city with the BART extension through downtown. We're excited that we're in the St. James Park Management District, which was put in place years back so that our park speeds can go towards both maintenance of the park and capital improvements, and we hope that part of that could go towards that new Levitt Pavilion, providing family-friendly concerts at St. James Park. We're excited to be tripling the size, the usable square feet, and building a turnkey new backyard for Town Park Towers residents. And lastly, it may sound weird, but we're actually really excited about the increase in property taxes. When you remove a bunch of single-story, non-contributing buildings and replace them with projects like this, that's where you get 10x annual property taxes increased, and that's how we provide sustainable income sources for the city's general fund, to provide services for police, fire, keeping libraries open seven days a week, paving roads, and other social services. Everything's tied to the built environment, so we appreciate your consideration tonight. I know Peter wanted to mention a couple of things as well.
Yes, thank, thank you, Josh, and I'll be very quick. First, I want to thank the staff for all their help to get us where we are today. I know it's been an arduous process, and we really appreciate it. Also, in addition to the community benefits that Josh mentioned, I also want to add that we'll be, we'll be providing $20 million in combined fees and affordable housing over the life of the project, $5 million in park fees, $1.5 million local schools, $2.5 million in construction taxes to the city, and as you mentioned, $10 million in annual property taxes. We're currently paying, currently paying $450,000, so it'll be a big, big jump. $7 million worth of site, of street and sidewalk improvements, and then a $10 million investment to Town Park Towers, which includes a turnkey courtyard, upgraded utilities, and, and secured parking. This is a site plan of the, of the courtyard. As you can see, we added, we increased the courtyard by, by actually allowing it to, to go onto our property, and as well as we programmed the courtyard with a Tai Chi area, a dining area, gaming tables, and an area to, to grow vegetables. So this is obviously a big improvement. And then the last thing I wanted to point out is the community outreach, there's a tremendous amount of outreach on this project, and we also received 12 support letters. Everything that has an asterisk is where we receive a support letter, each, each group. So thank you for your consideration and look forward to having further conversations.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for your investment in our city. Okay, let's go to the public first and we'll come back to the council.
Ally Saperman.
Ally Saperman, San Jose resident, here on behalf of Housing Action Coalition, strong supporter of this project, great use of, of land, adding over 400 residential units and up to 2,000 jobs, and a future BART station will be a great vision for transit-oriented development that the city really needs to achieve, and will add great foot traffic and vibrancy to the downtown core that it absolutely deserves. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Catherine Hedges.
This is Catherine Hedges. I am not representing a specific group now. I live across the street. Although they reach out to me individually, they have not done any kind of outreach to the tenants as a whole in either building, talking about the construction prob, you know, the, the, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really tired, the problems that we're going to have with the construction of their building, and they reach out to me individually, but not to anybody else in my building, and I haven't had a chance to talk to them, and there's going to be zero affordable housing in this building and zero in lieu fees because they're downtown, they get an exemption from paying into the Affordable Housing Fund. And I'm just disgusted that everybody thinks this is fantastic. Good night.
Louis Maranti.
Good evening, council members, and Mr. Mayor, my name is Louis Maranti. I'm Vice President of Public Policy with the Bay Area Council. We represent about 300 of the region's largest businesses, and I'm proud to be here tonight to support this project. We invited Icon and Echo folks to our endorsement committee for consideration and was unanimously and quickly approved. This is exactly the type of project that we need to move our region forward. We need homes, we need jobs, we need them centrally located in downtowns, close to a dense, good, reliable public transportation network. There's really just nothing not to like about this project, and I strongly urge your support for it. Thanks.
Vince.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll keep this brief. Vince Rocher from Silicon Valley Leadership Group. Our members have endorsed this project for all the reasons Mr. Maranti said, it's centrally located, and he's one of our biggest transit investments for the city ever, which the leadership group has long supported, so we hope you approve this project tonight. Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, and I live in downtown D3. And yeah, I also am very frustrated that there's not any affordable housing being built. The person who presented mentioned how it was in the St. James Management District. I'm like, well, are any of the folks who live in St. James Park going to be able to live there? And it's not enough just to have things be affordable, because that means 80% of the average median income versus 30% or even lower, and that's what we really need, and it's just continuing to contribute to our homelessness crisis because people aren't able to afford to live in such a nice area, having access to transit, having access to jobs. It's like, we want to, I mean, we want to continue to live here, we just cannot afford to live.
Tony.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed City Council. My name's Tony Miranda, and I'm current Board Chair for the San Jose Chamber of Commerce. I also serve as Chair for the Chamber's Housing and Land Use Policy Committee. That committee is made up of design, construction, and real estate professionals, in addition to a diverse group of local, small, midsize, and large corporate businesses, as well as some educational institutions. The Icon Echo mixed-use project was presented to our group for analysis and potential support. After hearing their presentation, we discussed their project in some detail and ultimately moved to unanimously recommend a formal position of support for the Icon Echo project. We have done so with a letter sent to all of you on behalf of our entire Board of Directors. We do so because the project fits within the city's general plan, it's the right site for a project this magnitude and type while providing housing and economic boost by adding over 400 badly needed housing units, and the project promotes both new housing and business in the downtown core. Please, please.
Aiden.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Aiden Marshall, speaking on behalf of Silicon Valley residents for Responsible Development. Silicon Valley residents is an unincorporated association of individuals and labor organizations who's members who live and work in the city of San Jose. Silicon Valley residents urges the city council not to approve this project at this time, but instead direct staff to correct errors in the FDR and address the project's failure to provide affordable housing. We provided written comments with supporting substantial evidence that the FDR does not adequately disclose, analyze, and mitigate potentially significant noise, air quality, public health, greenhouse gas, and hazards impacts. As a result of these significant impacts and policy inconsistencies, the city cannot make the finding to approve the project's permits. We respectfully request the city council not.
Victor.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, this is Victor Gomez here, speaking on behalf of the Downtown Association. Not going to take up a ton of your time, we appreciate your, your long work this evening, but really just wanted to express our support for this project and certainly want to thank Joshua and his team for the work that they're doing on this project. They did an amazing job, we admire the, the work that Urban Catalyst has, has done in the surrounding community, especially the neighboring Town Park Towers, so we really support this project and, and hope the San Jose Downtown Association can count on your support. Thank you.
Mike Sautergrin.
Good evening, council members, Honorable Mayor. PAC San Jose is not in opposition to this particular project, but did want to make three points. First, the project does include three non-contributing structures within the St. James Historic District, which caused an analysis that said that the building height nearest to the St. James Park should not have been as high as it is currently. And while PAC agrees that the irregular lines of the historic district probably indicate that that is appropriate, it wasn't addressed, and that so was a sloppy use of a financial hardship to justify the project. And also, we should be preserving the Tommy Smith and Giancarlo's mural. Thank you.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I was at that particular meeting when it was held with the Historical Landmarks District. You're going to cover up that mural, okay? So it's disgusting that the city continues to moralize and, and, and adopt this, 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 this kind of like moral imperative to protect the poor when you continually, continually create market rate housing at an accelerated rate. That is what is accelerating the homeless issues in this city, and you're doing it in order to protect the viability of people that aren't even residents of this city yet, because you continue to serve market rate housing because of the residents that you have planned to come here to San Jose at the expense of the residents that are already here. This is disgusting, and what you did is that the Historical Landmarks Commission voted five to zero to turn this down. I want that talked about.
Back to council?
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman Frost?
Yeah, thank you very much and appreciate the work on this, and I think there's some thanks to be given to a council and city staff that predates even our mayor's time here in the vision that they had on relocating City Hall over to where we're at today, and really expanding and growing downtown to the east. And we've seen it with one of the, the most beautiful high-rises that we have and the tallest building in the city right now, across the street, Mural Towers. If you're in City Hall and in a taller building, you can look down and see their pool and see the, the vibrancy of the building there, and certainly I know for city staff, they've already taken advantage of the Starbucks in the ground floor, and we're looking forward to the opening of a restaurant in the corner. This is now, I think, another step in, in that direction, really again, following the lead of the city that made an investment out here in, in the eastern edge of downtown. And so I just wanted to, to say thank you to the visionaries that again predate every member on this council and, and really the opportunity that we've now had to expand and grow downtown. As we know, we can get taller, as we go further east, and so that's why we've had the opportunity to get some of these, these actual real high-rise buildings. So it's exciting to see that level of investment, and want to say thank you to the Urban Catalyst team for your investment here in the downtown core of San Jose. Thank you for your support and investment of the senior living facility that you're abutting, and really the, the benefit that they'll be able to see out of that. It wasn't mentioned in their presentation, but it's in the report, but their fire life safety that's going to be enhanced for that building as was necessary, but I think really a benefit, something that they needed regardless, and that now they're going to be able to, to have on that site. And, and then I wanted to speak a little bit to the historic nature, because some of my colleagues not be, may not be aware of the St. James Historic District and the boundaries that are there. When I first came into office, I became very, very well aware of this, because we had a project literally across the street, and I actually fought on that project to preserve the old First Church, Church of Christ Scientists, and that, to this day, we're still working to fight to, to make sure that it gets tarped and covered. I know people think that it's ugly, but we're actually saving it by tarping it every single year, or requiring the, the owner there to, to tarp it. But I really learned a lot about the, the history and the interest that there was at a time to preserve the historical nature of that district, the St. James Park District. But when you look at the details of what is required of projects there, there, it was, it was really a snapshot in time to say, there's things like a building must have more stucco than, than windows, you know, space on, on it. And you can tell that they were thinking of buildings that really looked very similar to what is there today, and weren't necessarily looking at, well, how might we progress? How do we preserve the historical elements that are here? But how do we progress and build in a way that benefits and enhances them versus really keeps our downtown core with low-dense development and, and things that may not fit the, the elements that our community is interested in today? And so I, I worked to try and, and find a happy medium with that first controversial project during my first year, and, and I will say that that's been the interest that we've had, is to try to find out how do we, how do we embrace what is great about St. James Park, the historical buildings that are there? How do we preserve them? But how do we also allow for growth that complements those buildings? And, and so that's been my interest. This is actually just a bit outside the immediate surroundings, so it's kind of on the border edge, I think so even maybe a little less of, of a crucial element of adhering directly to the, the historical elements of the St. James Park District. But nonetheless, I think that our, our applicants here have done a great job on ensuring that this is something that is going to benefit the entire community there, and ultimately, hopefully, St. James Park as well, with the St. James Park Management District. And, and I will just speak to the affordable housing element of it, this is a, this is indeed a, you know, market rate project that's contributing to our housing need that we have. It's, it's not going to be the permanent supportive housing, but if you were following us on the last item, you may have noticed that the most clusters of, you know, some of the, the emergency interim housing and, and supportive housing are right here in the downtown core. We are creating those, and I have made a, a dedicated focus over my eight years to ensure that we are building more and more affordable housing here in downtown. So we're doing that while we're also building high-rise, market-rate dense housing. We need to do both, absolutely, and, and this is a compliment to that work that we've done. So I'm excited about it and look forward to this breaking ground. I don't think we, I don't know if you heard my motion earlier over the Zoom, so I'll move approval.
Second? Thank you. All right, other comments? Councilman Cohen? And then Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Jimenez, is your screen not working? Is that the problem? Okay, we'll go to Councilman Cohen, then we'll go to Councilmember Jimenez.
Just, just quickly, this is sort of peripheral to this. I, I appreciate the project, think it's great to add to the downtown core. I also want to, I want to thank staff, because in previous projects, I have asked specifically for details about tree removal and tree replacement, and I see that in here, and I just want to thank you for putting that in here, the number of replacement trees. I'm going to use this as my first mention, though, of the tree audit that we're starting to hear next week at the TNE Committee Meeting, that's going to come back to council in January. I'm very frustrated to read that we are not necessarily enforcing our tree requirement, that we're not necessarily following up and making sure that the trees are get planted, that are promised, that the, that the money that's supposed to be paid for tree replacement, if trees aren't planted, is getting collected. We've foregone hundreds of thousands of dollars as a result of that loss, of that, that lack of enforcement, and it's also an environmental problem. So I, I, I appreciate that this is here, and I hope that we'll make sure that those trees get planted and that we'll continue to do a better job in future projects, but thank you for putting that information in the memo.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I was just going to ask someone from the team if someone can come up and just talk a little bit about the timeline and what, what, what the expectation is as it relates to getting shovels on the ground and seeing some, some work started.
Thank you for the question. We have an appointment to submit for building permit December 16th, I believe. So we've actually already, it's different than some developers, we actually spec and spend the millions of dollars on the construction documents, even though we don't have approvals and things like that, so just to save time and cut down the overall timeline so that we can get the project delivered quicker ultimately for the city. So we are planning on submitting building permit in December with summer groundbreaking is, is the goal of 2023, pending how fast we can get through public works and building.
Well, hopefully we can help expedite that, but thank you so much, appreciate it.
Guys, don't go away anywhere, we got many more questions. If no one else does, I do. Just two quick questions. One is that what we saw on the screen, is that the design? I know designs can change between iterations of, are we seeing the actual design in, in the slides?
What was on the screen?
Yeah, okay, I just, that's a beautiful design. I really want to commend your team and the architect, it was really fantastic. The second question is, I know you've got two components here, residential and office. Certainly, it takes courage to build residential right now, takes something more than courage to build office? Is there a likelihood that you're going to perhaps build in phases, or?
It's possible, and, and I know a lot, a lot of folks in our community are wondering about office in general. Mayor, you're well aware of the bits and starts we've had over the decades, and there's blips in the valley, but we've gotten through all of those, and so we, we don't see any problem with, with financing for the, for the office.
Fantastic, I'm excited. All right, thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our city. Looks fantastic. All right, any other questions? If not, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, now we're rolling. 10.3 is a site development permit for South Second Street, affectionately known as Bowtown.
That is correct, thank you, Mayor. Again, Chris Burton, joined by Robert Manford, and now, just to point out, joined by David Keon, Dana Peake, and John Tu in the box, as well as staff available online. So yes, the project before you is a site development permit for the Bowtown project located at 409 and 425 South Second Street. It's a mixed-use project that involves the demolition of the existing vacant Bowtown restaurant, which is eligible as a candidate city landmark and three accessory buildings, the removal of two trees, and then the construction of a 30-story mixed-use tower, which includes 540 units and 7,400 square feet of commercial space. Again, this project includes extended construction hours that have been included in the project description. Similarly to the previous project, the site has a downtown general plan land use designation and a downtown primary commercial zoning district. The project is considered consistent with both, as well as the downtown design guidelines and standards, and a supplemental EIR was completed with this project, and to talk about that, I'm going to hand it over to David Keon.
Thank you, Chris. Again, David Keon, Principal Planner on the city's environmental review team. Just want to very quickly go over the EIR that was prepared for this project. It was a supplemental EIR to the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR at public circulation from April 29th to June 20, June 14th. The First Amendment, which included responses to public comments, was published on October 14th. Significant unavoidable impacts were identified to air quality due to construction, especially for excavation, and cultural resources due to demolition of an eligible city landmark, the Bowtown Building. In addition, there was less than significant impacts identified to operational air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazards, hazardous materials, noise, and construction vibration. I did want to mention also, yesterday, there was a letter submitted by Muso Drury and behalf of Laborers International United, contesting the adoption of a supplemental EIR. I would like to point out that this firm did not participate in the Sequel process, they never submitted any comment letters during public circulation, during the notice of preparation, or prior to the planning commission hearing, so they've submitted a letter right at the very end. However, none of the issues raised in this letter are substantially requiring recirculation. They claim that this EIR is inadequate baseline, interferes mitigations to hazardous materials because a phase two has not been completed. It is not standard city practice to always require a phase two with, with a project prior to project approval. Oftentimes, there are issues that a phase two soil investigation cannot occur due to existing uses on the site. Another claim was that the city did not implement all feasible mitigation measures to reduce air quality health risk impacts. Like to mention that the health, the mitigation is based upon Bay Area Air Quality Management District guidelines, and the claim that was made was based upon this south, the Southern California Air District guidelines. However, the mitigation measures that have included the measures go beyond the back mid and construction guidelines and would reduce impacts as to the greatest extent feasible. Also want to mention that the commenters assert that the EIR does not address greenhouse gas emissions. It does, specifically in connection to the analysis with the downtown strategy 2040 EIR, and also the city's greenhouse gas reduction strategy. Finally, there's mentioned that this project does not properly evaluate indoor air quality impacts from, from interior fixtures, especially formaldehyde. Want to mention that this is not a Sequel issue, this is, they use back Bay Area Air Quality Management District guidelines for exterior sources of pollution to apply to indoor sources, which is incorrect, and this is, so it's not appropriate for Sequel. The project will be constructed according to the most recent building codes, will ensure safety of occupants. And with that, I'd like to give it back to Chris Burton.
Thanks, David. And so with that, staff's recommending approval of the project through the adoption of a resolution certifying the supplemental EIR and a resolution approving the site development permit, and I believe a representative from the applicant West Bank is available online.
All right, from West Bank. Welcome, is it Andrew or? Andrew, welcome, Andrew. Andrew, are you able to hear us right now?
I'm promoting him.
Oh, he's being promoted, okay. Can you hear me? Yes, we can. Thank you, Andrew. Ernie Yamani as well.
What was the first name?
Ernest Yamani, yeah.
Okay, he's coming over.
All right, well, Mayor Licardo and the rest of the council, we really appreciate this opportunity. We are bringing forward a really exciting project at the Bowtown site. This is a collaboration with James Chang Architects and Steinberg Hart as the architect of record. We've done a number of projects with James Chang in the past, so we've done projects in Vancouver, Toronto, Seattle, and we're excited to bring another project to downtown San Jose. So that I'll hand it over to Ernie, and he'll give a presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So this project is a collection of projects by West Bank throughout the downtown. And just to introduce myself, as I said, Ernie Yamani with Steinberg Hart. I've had 45 years in San Jose, I'm really excited about what's happening in the downtown here today with this project and others. But this project specifically tries to honor the past history of Santa Clara Valley Orchards, and also to respect, I think, the fact that there's a local restaurant that existed here since the 1960s with a very distinctive architectural style. In the future, the Orchard will bring nature to every unit and will be the most energy-efficient and sustainable residential project ever built in the city, will meet or exceed LEED Platinum or ILFE standards for net zero carbon, and I believe this will set a new benchmark for us as well. The project, as staff mentioned, is 30 stories, 540 units, 194 cars. It's located on the corner of San Salvador and Second Street, and on the ground floor there's a fair amount of amenities, the restaurant occupying the most prominent corner of the site, keeping that heritage alive. Adjacent to it is a courtyard to the south, which is shared by the lobby in the restaurant, and then on the ground floor, a lobby space and a West Bank branded bicycle club, as well as residential co-working spaces. The typical unit floor includes a mix of three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, some of those one-bedrooms with dens and studios, the mix kind of in the left corner, each unit having its own balcony and access to the nature. Each unit having its own balcony and access to the nature I mentioned, with the landscaping being maintained by West Bank. We have a very nice roof terrace, which is purely amenity space upstairs for the indoor-outdoor pool, outdoor gardens, party areas, gym and spa, pet areas, and extensive terrace areas for use by the residents. So these are just a series of views to wrap up. You can kind of see the Bowtown restaurant as against the backdrop of the landscape building and the rooftop kind of picking up on that architectural character down below. This is a view from the north with the service entrance being kind of integrated, as well as the access to the parking. And the ground street level, we have stone and glass with anodized gold mullions, which are warm in color, kind of matching the original character of the Bowtown restaurant. Kind of a view from the south along Second Street. And in this view, you can kind of see how the prominence of the original restaurant is maintained, and that's the original sign that will also be restored as part of the project. And just a view of the top, kind of picking up that architectural character that I think will be prominent in the San Jose skyline from distance. And so that concludes it. Thank you to the staff, to the city, to our client, and our partner, James Chang. We've had a good time with this and look forward to it being in addition to the city.
Thank you, Ernie. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you for bringing this eye-popping project to our city. Let's go to the public.
Paul? Paul Soto? I'm going to move on to Victor.
Honorable Mayor Liccardo and members of the council. This is Victor Gomez, once again, here speaking on behalf of the Downtown Association. Again, here speaking in favor of this project. This is potentially a game-changing project that will bring a large number of new residential units to this neighborhood. It was reviewed by our downtown design committee, where it exceeded our criteria in several areas, including the commitment to sustainable building and energy practices. And the committee appreciated the bike sharing program proposed for the tenant community as well. So we thank you for the consideration tonight and just really wanted to express our support for this project. Thank you.
Mike Sottergren?
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, just wanted to say that we are so happy that West Bank has embraced the integration of the 1960s Googie-style architecture into their design from top to bottom. We want to make sure that it remains a 24-hour operation and that it is welcome to all people at all times. We hope that the project will incorporate as many of the original elements as possible, including original fabric if as possible, and would encourage a laser scan of the existing building before it's demolished so that you can accurately recreate all of the angles. There's a lot of different angles on there that probably can't victorially be captured. Thank you very much.
Alec Shore?
Hey, this is Alec Shore again with Catalyze SV. Our members didn't review this project, but in looking at it, it looks like there's over 1,000 parking spaces. And it seems like this is right next to the Future Bar Station, which the developers talk about, as well as some very robust transit in our downtown. And I'm just wondering if, in fact, council is interested in talking about parking on that.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Thank you for pointing that out, Alex. Because it shows the contradiction and the hypocrisy that's going on in these policy decisions. So thank you for pointing that out. Secondly, this is on the site of the Sambo's Restaurant, one of the most racist restaurants in the country at that time. Okay, this Juan Carlos and Tommy Smith mural that you guys are going to destroy, they couldn't sit and eat at this restaurant either in the 1960s. Okay, and so the racist and class policies that continue to perpetuate the generational poverty in this city is sickening. I mean, you guys really are disgusting to me because you sit there with a straight face and a mocking laugh that is actually sadistic because you know exactly what is going to happen to the citizens in the city once these structures are built. You know exactly.
Back to the council.
Okay, Councilmember Peralas, you're on a roll.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, excited because even the next project as well. These are three projects that my office has worked closely on. And as we talked about over the last couple of weeks about investment in high-rise in the downtown core, these were really the developers and the projects that I was inferring to when it comes to, I think, developers that are really close to pulling the trigger and investments that could help us turn a corner that we haven't seen in quite some time. And so, you know, we've made some tough decisions when it comes to incentivizing high-rise development in downtown. We had those discussions. I appreciate my colleagues on the unanimous support the other week. And I think this, again, is an example of what we can achieve out of that because they are very, very difficult projects to be able to get off the ground. But I am actually confident that the last one, this one, and the next one are going to be able to do that. So I'm excited about actually seeing them get there. And this is the important next step. And there's a lot to be proud about on this project. Thank you, West Bank, for working with incorporating the historic building that is here on site. Again, being able to build densely in and amongst the downtown core, but not stymying ourself on that growth. And West Bank has proven so previously as well. You've got the Davidson Building that they're helping to reimagine and then finding opportunities here. It's not written into this one, but there's an opportunity. We've been partnering with West Bank on a hotel conversion just adjacent to this building, where we're in a process and will be announcing soon of being awarded grant money from the state. And really just, I think, a great opportunity and partner that we have in West Bank, someone that is looking at the historic elements of these buildings, something, somebody that is looking at partnering in affordable housing development. And so I want to say thank you to them for their investment. And as my colleagues have noticed and the mayor noted, an eye-popping project, one that is fairly unique. One of the things that stood out right away, West Bank is working with a number of world-renowned architects and designers. And you'll see that the building there, something that really stands out of a look that we haven't seen before with some of their buildings. And one of the elements that they are attempting to incorporate is the tree canopy happening throughout the building and the greenery, really, that they're trying to incorporate in their buildings. It's yet to be seen. Is that going to happen? I don't know. I haven't seen that done at this level. So I will say I am cautiously optimistic on this one. And so, but I appreciate, and I hope my colleagues do too. Because what it's doing, these type of projects are pushing the boundaries for what we can see and what we should expect out of development in downtown. I think for too long, we were accepting a sort of a status quo or a mediocre even of a design of a building in downtown because we were so eager just to get anything off the ground. And what we have with these buildings is really going to raise the bar. And so I appreciate, again, the partnership here with West Bank. And I will move to approve the, or accept the staff recommendation. Second.
All right. Thank you, council member. Other comments from my colleagues? As I don't see any, I'll just jump in and say I appreciate all the comments that Councilmember Peralas made, that this is really a great architectural addition to our skyline and appreciate bringing in great architects, as well as using great architects we have right here at home. Thank you, Ernie, for your contribution. This is really stunning. And Andrew Jacobson at West Bank and Gary Dilbo and everybody who's been involved. We're just so grateful to see great projects like this. I think it raises everyone's aspirations here in the downtown to see these kinds of projects emerge and hopefully inspires others to join in. So thrilled to see it moving forward. Any other comments? All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, finally. 10.4 is a site development permit and historic preservation permit for East Santa Clara Street and South Fourth Street, just across the street.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our final project for you this evening, as you noted, is just across the street on the southwest corner of East Santa Clara and Fourth Street. This is the Suzaco Project. So the project includes, it's a site development permit and a historic preservation permit on three parcels, includes the demolition of the side and rear wall of the, an interior of a city landmark, demolition of two buildings, and the construction of approximately 75,000 square feet of office, retaining the historic facades on the corner of East Santa Clara and Fourth Street. It also includes an alternate parking arrangement. So like our two prior projects, the project has a downtown general plan designation and a downtown core, downtown primary commercial zoning district. It's been assessed with, against both the general plan and the zoning code and the downtown design guidelines and found consistent with each. As noted, the project does include a historic component as well. Sorry. Let me skip ahead. So the project prepared a draft supplemental environmental impact report. It was circulated for 45 days from June 27th to August 11th. Less than significant impacts with mitigation incorporated included air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources, hazardous and hazardous materials, and construction-related noise and vibration impacts. Significant unavoidable impacts identified for cultural resources and land use and planning. Therefore, city council will need to approve, excuse me, will need to adopt a statement of voter-earning considerations should they approve the project. Comments on the draft supplemental EIR expressed concern regarding the lack of mitigation measures to minimize the identified impact on the designated city landmark, impacts to the San Jose downtown commercial, national register historic district, noncompliance with the general plan policies adopted for the purpose of historic preservation, and cumulative impacts on historic resources, as well as bird safety, preconstruction, bird safety, timing, concurrent construction in downtown projects. Staff responded to these comments through the First Amendment to the supplemental EIR. And they were posted on the city's website on October 18th, and staff saw no need to recirculate the EIR. So with that, we're recommending approval of this project, again, through resolution of, through a resolution certifying the supplemental EIR, a resolution approving subject to condition the site development permit, and a consider staff's recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the historic preservation permit as well. And with that, the applicant is available and present.
Chris, please drink some water.
I will. Excuse me.
Welcome, Ted.
Caleb is on as a panelist.
Apologies for delay. Thank you, council members and Mayor Liccardo. Really appreciate it. Thank you to staff for all the many months of work and effort that obviously went into this. Most of you are probably very familiar with the site. It's directly across Fourth Street, where the old pizza building was. We've been working since 2017 to try to cobble together.
Ted, I don't know if it's just me, but yeah.
I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, that's better, sorry.
Thank you.
Want people to be able to hear you on the.
We've been working since 2017 to try to cobble together some parcels to make a viable project in that location. We are currently proposing a Class A creative office space with a large food and beverage offering on the ground floor and a rooftop bar at 130 East Santa Clara. The office is geared, based on the size and the plates, towards smaller users that are traditionally called downtown San Jose home. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. There's a couple of key design ideas. Steve Stanton from RMW will speak to those in more detail. But I would like to point out that we are intentionally somewhat modest in scale to try to be respectful of the block and the historic district, and that it will be a mass timber structure to reduce the carbon footprint of the project. We did look nationally and internationally at hopefully best of class examples. I'm going to show you a couple that we used to riff on for the design. This happens to be the Restoration Hardware Hotel in the Meatpacking District in New York. And there's another one here in Poland that we liked. It integrated historic buildings of this era with, and reinvigorated them with new structures that were integrated into them. So we, these were some of the ideas. This is our building, which you will recognize the facade at the base level. We tried to incorporate and we will incorporate and refurbish the facades at not insignificant cost, but we believe it is worth it. Through the process, we've tried to incorporate feedback from key preservation stakeholders, including adjusting setbacks and adding vertical delineation for their requests. And we've had quite a few conversations. We are actively looking to re-tenant the ground floor while we go through the pre-con period, as we'd like to activate it as best we can. And we believe that creating a vibrant corner will, in fact, help preserve the other historic buildings on this block by making the other properties more viable. I'd like to turn it over to Steve Stanton from RMW, please.
Green button. Thanks, Ted. Hey, Mr. Mayor, council members. Steve Stanton with RMW. So we see this project as an opportunity to revitalize and re-energize this neighborhood and this area of the downtown core. This proposed six-story mixed-use project includes office space on the upper floors and restaurant retail space planned for the ground floor, with the ground floor space supporting the activation of pedestrian experience at street level along Santa Clara. There are also activated rooftop terrace lounges on the top of the building that overlook Santa Clara and Fourth Street. With the importance of the existing two-story historic landmark brick building on this corner site, the project proposes to maintain the historic facades along Fourth Street and Santa Clara Street, including the repair and rehabilitation of these facades, which will be done in a manner consistent with Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. So these standards also require that the new construction be compatible but differentiated from the historic elements being retained. And so we've been sensitive to this requirement. The materiality of the new proposed building design includes a clean, elegant glass skin facade, which is setback from the existing two-story facade below, and even further setback at the third level to honor the roof line and street presence of the existing building facades. The extent of glass on the north and east elevations allows for great daylight and views for the space while minimizing heat gain due to orientation. And the structure itself is unique in that it's proposed to be mass timber. And we'll touch more on that in just a moment. So the site sits at the east end of the historic district and is situated within an area that includes several existing and proposed high-rise buildings. And here's a shot of the existing street with our site on the far left and the Clariana on the far right. And here is a proposed new project. It maintains low-rise scale of the block and holds a corner at the end of the historic district. So mass timber is a very sustainable material, and we felt it was a perfect fit for this building. So using mass timber is a part of reflection and nod to the existing structure of the building that'll be removed, but it also is important to the carbon story where we look to reduce carbon emissions in our buildings. And in addition, it's a beautiful material that we intend to expose as an architectural feature in the finished building design. There's another shot looking down fourth. There's a shot looking on Santa Clara towards City Hall. And then just to close out, we fully understand that the removal of the two back walls, interior and roof creates an impact to the landmark building. Our vision is to rehabilitate the two main front 100-year-old facades, which are so important to the streetscape, neighborhood, and historic district, and thoughtfully integrate them into a new building that'll hopefully help define, shape, and revitalize this site and neighborhood for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the public first.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The Planning Commission and the presentation that was given to both the Planning Commission and the Historical Landmarks Commission was filled with racist, classist slides. What they used is they used the premise that we are the solution to crime in that area. Okay, this is what they did. Okay, and they got hard-checked for it in both commissions, especially the Historical Landmarks Commission. You don't, you don't come to this area and saying that gentrification is the solution to this crime-ridden area. And, and, and the Historical Landmarks Commission also checked you on the compromise on the integrity of the landmark. Now, I don't think this council really wants to be, these facade, these buildings have stayed intact in their, and their integrity for over 100 years, and then you're just going to come in and allow a developer to throw you some cash and you're going to, you're going to go ahead and destroy that? I mean, come on, man.
Yet again, there's another project with no affordable housing. Are we just going to put people in sheds and not let anybody move into housing because we're sure not building affordable housing to put people in after they live in their tiny home sheds? And about the previous building, what is this with the vegetation on facades? It's a code violation if anybody can see my balcony plants. If they let these developers put vines and trees and stuff all over their buildings, I better not get any more code violations for balcony plants. Good night.
Mike Sodergrin?
Councilmembers, this is a nice design, but it shouldn't be at this location. Now, the city is eager for more to move forward on all developments, but even beautiful designs should not go on top of city landmarks located wholly within National Registered Historic Districts. Staff concludes that significant damage to our stark fabric is unavoidable based on the project's program goals and an applicant produced 2021 economic hardship report that asserts that it's financially unreasonable to adaptively reuse buildings that have provided housing and street-level retail for many people, modest means for well over 100 years. Nine families with LSAQ protection lost their affordable housing when this property was purchased. Mom and pop businesses that survived COVID are all gone and with no plan for interim occupancy. Graves House burned tonight. That's my fear. Thank you.
Victor?
On Mayor Lucardo, Victor Gomez here once again with the San Jose Downtown Association. I'll keep it short. Downtown Association really supports this project and appreciates the applicant's continued investment in downtown San Jose and their commitment to improving the streetscape in and around the downtown core. So like in previous projects, we appreciate the investment in downtown and hope the council fully supports this project. Thank you.
Back to council.
All right, Councilmember Prawls.
Yeah, thank you. And just a clarification to start, this is a commercial and office building, so not a, not a, not a housing building here. And, but I do want to say thank you to Bayview and Ted and your team. Certainly, we know that you are willing to take the plunge and really make an investment. We've seen that with Mero Towers. And so hopefully my colleagues feel a sense of assuredly that this project will be able to break ground as well. My colleagues may wonder why I wrote a simple memo on this one and asking essentially the same thing that I did on the last two. And I will say it was because this brought a more significant importance when it came to the historical building, because it is a historical building that is going to need to be demolished and essentially could have been completely demoed and lost in the process. And as Ted knows, it was an interest of mine, certainly an interest of advocates from our Preservation Action Council here in San Jose, but, but also an interest of mine to try and preserve this building. And I had never seen anything like this before. In the slides that they showed, they showed you some examples across the globe where this has been done before, but we really haven't seen this here in, in San Jose and in downtown. And I was very pleased when I saw what they were able to do with this building, when they capped the height of the building as well to really fit in with the structures in the area, keeping the facade that we have on Santa Clara and on Fourth, one that all of you are very familiar with. And you can see, even as you see in the image here, sort of that, that state market and for those that know the sign that was partially covered and it's been preserved, that's the original piece that's somehow still, you know, sitting there. It is a beautiful building as it stands today, and I think it's going to be even that much more when it is, when it is redone as we look at it here. I know it's not perfect when it comes to our PAC SJ advocates in really wanting to fully preserve a building like this, but I do think this is likely, you know, one of the best examples that we can have and to lead off on, on how we can preserve a building like this or the facade of it in a building and also allow for some growth, some modest growth within the building. So I'm excited about the opportunities. I think this is going to be extremely attractive to, you know, retail and office tenants when this comes up. This is, this is an exciting development. This is a great site, as we've seen with the other projects that are coming in, or the other project Icon Echo across the street, and another nod to really City Hall and what it's done to move the development here along the eastern edge of downtown. And so thank you for that. And again, look forward to this breaking ground. With that, I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Motion from Councilmember Prawls, second, Councilmember Davis. Hey, Ted, I just had a couple of questions, and I do want to say thank you to you and Leanne Lee and the entire team for the spectacular addition to our skyline across the street here. On this project, it looks very challenging anytime you're dealing with preservation and adaptive reuse of various kinds. And I know you're not using the whole building, but certainly the facade, which is super important. It looks as though from the design, and it's been a while since I'd looked at this project, it looks like you've got a holdout parcel here. I won't delve in public into the details because I'm sure those are always challenging conversations, I'm sure. Is there any way, and maybe this is a question more for the attorneys here, but I'd hate to think that in perpetuity, we could be stuck with something less than a complete project. And is there any way we can approve anything that would give you the ability at some subsequent date if circumstances should change to be able to acquire that parcel and incorporate it in the design without having come back through the whole process? Is that something anybody has contemplated yet?
It's not something we've explored.
Okay, so you're just pretty settled on taking what you got?
That was the thinking, yes.
Okay. All right. I won't delve any further then. Can, can I ask just about the Fourth Street facade? I couldn't tell from, maybe we can go back to the slides. The one that showed-
Would you like the image that looks down Fourth Street?
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
If we could. I was just trying to understand, I couldn't tell from the slide what exactly I was looking at, and I was hoping you could describe it, because it doesn't look like exactly the same wall. That's it. Is that glass? I'm trying to understand where the gentleman on the bicycle is. Beneath the tree line.
Yep, beneath the tree line.
Yeah.
Heading down Fourth Street. Okay, I see the bicycle you're referring to.
Yeah, is that glass?
There's a glass section there that is intended to help activate the food and beverage, the restaurant that will go in there.
Okay, that's great. So it'll be active from the street?
Yep.
Okay.
The original design had windows that had been blocked over time that I believe that, let's say that wall has been dynamic over the last 100 years.
Oh, I didn't know that. So that's actually bricked in? No, that, okay. That's very interesting. Okay. Thank you. It's, you know, I've seen efforts like this in Europe, and I know this is really hard, and I'm glad you're taking it all on. The last question I had was just about the height here. Is this a 60-foot limit that you're trying to abide by or is this-
So it stays as low-rise?
Yeah.
For fire code reasons that relate to cost and the plate size and the ability to get elevators and other systems into it?
Okay.
So we stay under that threshold.
So this isn't anything we're doing to you. This is just the optimal way to build based on what you know in the codes.
Based on a series of constraints, we optimized it as best we could to make it as viable.
Got it.
As we could.
Okay, great. Well, look forward to seeing it across the street from City Hall. I hope you can bring back the salad bar. That'd be nice.
I'm aware that the salad bar is very important.
Thank you.
We're going to try to put one of across Santa Clara for you, Street, prior to this being completed.
Yeah, it's too late for me, but maybe for others. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Is there any other comment? Okay, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Prawliz?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Okay, we're on the public open forum. Thanks, everybody.
Paul?
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Golden State Portables was hired by Silicon Valley Leadership Group to place 32 portable containers of feces and urine right next to a San Jose Historical Landmark, which is Hammer and Lewis. Okay, so I hope Vince Rocha is on this call and that he can hear me, because I want to talk to him, and I want to know who made that decision to put those porta-potties right next to a historical landmark. Hammer Lewis has been holding that flag in San Jose since 1976. I talked to Irving today. He did not give permission for this city and Silicon Valley Leadership Group to put those there. Okay, I talked to the owner of Golden State Portables, and he profusely apologized to me. I demand Vince Rocha and Victor Gomez and Omar Torres give an apology to the San Jose community and the Chicago-
Mike, or, yeah, Mike Sodergrin?
Yeah, Mike Sodergrin, Preservation Action Council. I'm really saddened to report to the council that the Mitzi Place project, the old Graves House, one of the last remaining orchard mansions, burned tonight. And it's, it really brings to the foreground the necessity of San Jose updating its ordinance on the responsibilities of the owner for the securing and protecting of properties when they're unoccupied. It often, I think, we get in the way of allowing developers to move quickly by making them have eviction requirements that get the houses or the buildings empty and therefore without the ability to push back on intrusion. It's just really a sad, sad day for San Jose. Thank you.
Mike, I'm sorry if you're still with us. Could you just tell us again which, which structure that is, where it is?
Hold on, let's get him. I need to get him back.
Oh, okay.
No, I mean, he's on there. I just need to click allow to talk.
It's, it's 4146 Mitzi Drive, which is in West San Jose. Chappie Jones knows this project.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Sorry to hear that.
Alex?
Hey, Alex Shore again with Catalyzed SV. You've heard of cleanup legislation. This is cleanup public comment. I made, I was talking about one project tonight and I meant another, and I apologize to the applicants if they're still on, but I meant to be talking about the previous project that had already been improved. So if it's a late night for you all, it's also a little bit of a late night for some of us following along and working on, working hard. So my apologies if that was confusing to the council and to the applicants. Thanks.
Back to council.
Okay, let's get out of here. Means adjourned.